Recording in progress.
Chair Nutter, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Ashley. Welcome to this special meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, August 8th. Our regular meeting at 7:00 PM has been canceled due to the 6:00 PM start of this special meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you please do the roll call now? Ashley?
Yes, Chair Nutter.
Present.
Vice Chair Patel, here. Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Welcome to this special meeting this evening. Our conference code is ID 816-4410-9023, and its passcode 897780. Again, that's 816-4410-9023 with a passcode of 897780. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to have you here in person and with the options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Public comment period. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. Stake law prevents the Commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the Commission's discretion, and it can be extended if the Commission shares to do so. I am opening the public comment period now, and we are asking the members of the public attending in person if they could turn in their speaker slips. And those remotely raise their hand.
Chair Nutter, we have no public commenters.
Okay. Seeing we have no public commenters, we will close the public comment period.
The next item on the agenda is item number one, zoning code amendment for planning approval extensions ordinance recommendation.
Thank you. We will start with staff presentation, clarifying questions for the Commission and public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, the Commission will deliberate and vote on a recommendation to council. Can we please have the presentation?
Good evening, Chair Nutter and Commissioners. My name is Julia Klein, Principal Planner with Community Development Department. I have a bit of a cough today, so just excuse me if I have to cough. I do not have a long presentation. In fact, I'll mostly just be talking, and the slide that I do have for you is recommendation to City Council. For those that may be in the audience or viewing this at home, this information I'm sharing currently is in the staff report. So this project is a code amendment. It's amendment to the zoning code for planning approval extensions. This applies to planning application projects that have already been approved. Currently, the zoning code provides two years for planning entitlements, so the approvals are only good for two years. Within that time period, a completed building permit application needs to be filed, and all of the work for permit issuance needs to be completed within six months. Some, after that period, the planning approval expires. So during, most of the time during a good economy, when there's good financing, contractor services and everything are available, projects, development projects could come in and meet that timeline. However, during economic downturns, such as what we saw during the Great Recession and what we're seeing in the national economy currently, that timeframe is typically not enough. And based on what we're hearing from developers who have planning approvals, they're saying that the financing that they need to move on to building permit and construction, the conditions for those commercial loans have changed and become harder. So what we're proposing right now is a code amendment that allows applicants to apply for a one-time extension for up to two years on those planning approvals. This would apply to projects that do not have subdivision maps. So this could apply to duplexes, triplexes, you know, and different types of housing projects as well as city projects. And the approval is intended to, we've also through the code amendment clarified and refined some of the findings that need to be made before an approval that the extension is granted, and so those are outlined in the draft ordinance. So at this time, that concludes staff's sort of background summary of the reasons for the code amendment and what we're trying to do with this code amendment. And I have before you the recommendation from the staff report. I'm available for questions, and I do want to mention that there was a public comment letter that came in at 2:55. And so that has been printed and is also emailed to you. So I think for the public comment, it talks about questions regarding whether the ordinance would set a precedence, whether the exemption from SEQA, you know, applies to future projects. And it talks about Block 21, a project that has, the extension has already been approved, and that was with a subdivision map, but it's also not the subject of today's code amendment item. With regards to this ordinance, this code amendment setting a precedence, it would not. The code amendment is merely to provide an opportunity for applicants to apply. Each project would then need to come in and be evaluated individually. They would need to make those findings that are in the draft ordinance. If the conditions and the criterias cannot be met, the city would deny that request for an extension. In regards to this question about SEQA exemption, the exemption that's being cited in the staff report is for the code amendment. So it's for the processing of the code amendment. It's not for the future projects. So I think that concludes. I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions for staff at this time?
Through the chair, I just have one question, and just more maybe for my own edification. Why does this not apply to subdivision map projects?
Through the State Subdivision Map Act, there's already provisions allowing projects to have subdivision map to seek extensions. So that's already covered, and so this would only apply to projects that don't have the map.
Okay. Thank you.
They basically don't need it.
Sounds good.
I have a question. It's not really a question because I think you just said this, but I just want to be clear and clarify it for myself. So currently, it's two years to get a building permit issued after entitlements. You have two years from the time of your entitlements to the time of pulling a permit.
They have to apply within that, and then they have six months to pull. So 2.5, two and a half years to pull the permit, but they have to apply before the two years expire.
Oh, so they only have to apply for building. Okay, because I mean, building can take a while, too. Because, for various reasons. And so this would be an additional two years over that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Just one quick question. Reading through the report, I think the last time this was addressed was in 2011, and that ordinance had a sunset date. This one would not sunset.
This one would not sunset, and the reason for us proposing code amendment without a sunset is that, you know, economic cycles, there's downturns and, you know, positive years. It's cyclical in nature. What we're seeing trends about 10 years, every 10 years. And so if we know that this is something that's happening in our community, you know, and I've been here 20 years, I've seen this go up in town at least two times, you know, why bring forward a code amendment every time? You know, I think providing this option in the code, it provides an option during this period, and when the economy is good, developers don't need to rely on it because they have the financing, they have everything that they need to move the project forward. There's no reason to seek an extension.
Makes sense. Thank you very much. Ashley, do we have any public commenters?
Oh, I just had one other question, just to clarify also. So it would not come before Planning Commission? It would be at the staff level or zoning administrator level?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair Nutter, we have one public commenter. It's also the timer at three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
It looks like we have another public commenter, too, so there's going to be two in total. Michael Grubb. Give me just a moment. Michael Grubb, you can go ahead and speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. As a citizen of San Mateo, I oppose this two-year extension. We have recently seen where developers have displaced businesses and in other projects, projects, this could include residences, and then say, oh, sorry, I don't have the money to proceed after disrupting people's lives. And in the recent case, creating a square block of ugly dirt in an already ugly downtown area. From the information that the staff person just gave, it appears that between applying for a building permit and applying for an extension, a process could go on for five years or longer with either an uncompleted or partially completed project, which would be, again, be very ugly in the downtown area or any place. Commercial developments are not needed. Vacancy rates are high. There was an article just in Bloomberg News today that the banks are trying to sell commercial real estate loans because they're so risky, and nobody wants to buy those. Please explain to the public why you continue to approve unneeded projects and why you would permit developers to have a two-year extension due to either their poor planning or their mismanagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Sekuda, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening. This is Rick Sekuda. Yeah, I just want to echo what the prior speaker had said, and add a few other comments. You know, we said we're in an economic downturn. You know, you could say that about every year, but it's not so bad as we have to take this drastic measure. And as was mentioned, four and a half, five years is plenty. It's too much time to bring a project to fruition. And I was wondering how Block 21 already got an extension if we're talking about this now, and also why the SEQA does not apply here. So, you know, conditions can change over time, and waiting four and a half years, the conditions that made it right to approve a project may not be there in four, four and a half, five years. And I thought that staff-level approval for an extension was inadequate. It should go to the Commission. And when the public brings comments forth, I would like the Commission to at least acknowledge those comments and discuss them and provide an answer or look for further comment. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rick.
Chair Nutter, we have no more public commenters.
We'll close the comment public period and bring it back to the Commission unless staff would like to rest on to either Mr. Grubb or Rick.
Through the chair, Zach Dahl, interim director for CDD. I did want to provide a bit more kind of context for this code amendment request. One of the reasons, this is a framework. This isn't any particular project getting an extension. But what we've identified, Julia mentioned, touched on it as well, is for a project that has a tentative map associated with it, it automatically gets to benefit from the extensions built into the subdivision map act. But for projects that don't have a map, they have zero ability currently to seek relief for an extension. And so what this does is this levels the playing field a little bit and says, any project approved, in theory, could apply for relief and get an extension request up to two years, depending on the circumstances and justification. So that's part of the motivation. And then the other piece is, I think, as we were discussing at an earlier meeting, we also wanted to clarify one of the findings here because it wasn't really clear what the intent was. And so this is also an opportunity to provide clarity on exactly what that third finding is, just so both the public, the Commission, and applicants are clear what the threshold is when you're asking for an extension request. And so that's a little context. We had already been looking at this, and I think that discussion just spurred on the need to move forward. And so also, having the framework for an extension request is fairly standard when you look across jurisdictions, when you have planning approvals. You want to have a kind of a relief mechanism depending on circumstances where it's in the community and an applicant's interest to grant them some additional time because there is investment in time in going through an entitlement process. And if a planning application expires, they have to go back to the beginning and start over. So then you might actually be looking at a vacant lot for even longer. So they start at the zoning administrator level, but if there's a challenge in making the findings, as was the case with an earlier application, it would be elevated to Planning Commission. So those are all additional contextual basis for why we're bringing this forward here this evening.
Thank you for the clarity. Any comments from Commissioners?
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Yeah, I wanted to make note of what one of the speakers said, which is that, you know, when, you know, members of the public bring up comments, that it's nice to get acknowledgement. So I always learn a lot from what people say and what they provide to us in writing, you know, in advance. And so, yeah, I want to make sure everyone's clear about the SEQA thing. That's a statement that's made to every item, maybe we've just talked about this, I guess, but every item that's on the agenda is determined, you know, that it's, that there's just the item in general. It doesn't mean that projects under this extension would be exempt from SEQA. So hopefully that's clear. It's just sort of a blanket statement that's, that said that the agenda item in general is not under SEQA. So I had made a few notes. Well, I also kind of wanted to comment on the project, the extension that we saw, I guess Block 21, the cleared lot, that it was noted that when we saw this before the Planning Commission, it was clear that the extension was being requested that was not affecting, I mean, according to the applicant, it was not going to affect the construction schedule and that the work that needed to be done for the soils testing was really kind of part of the overall project schedule. And, you know, included soils testing and then a geotech report. And I guess I just want to comment that it's never in the developer's interest to, like, delay things, like, they want to get it done and, you know, start, you know, seeing the benefits for themselves as well. It's, it's just, you know, it's just that sometimes these things take a while. So in my preparation for the next item on the agenda, I was thinking about this question of streamlining things and the process, and I kind of made a list for myself of like, what all is entailed in, you know, getting a project, you know, ready to build, you know, like shovel-ready or whatever they call it. And, you know, there's, the applicant will start putting together, you know, the package for submittal to planning, but then after entitlements, they still have so much to do. I mean, they've, they've probably been working on the structural system and the mechanical system. Where did my notes go? Already, but they've got, you know, Title 24 energy codes to look at, they've got ADA accessibility to take into account, they've got the building envelope, they've got, you know, possible changes from potential tenants or other users within the building that have to be incorporated in the back and forth process. They have possible new code cycle that might come about because the new codes come out every three years. So I feel like the decision-making and the design process and the construction document process can, can take so long, and it's not necessarily the city that's, that's the one that's holding it up. It's all the other parties that come into play. So I feel like it's a reasonable thing to have this as an allowance. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I did not have many comments. I just wanted to note that I appreciated the clarification around the language of the third finding, since we spent so much time discussing it at the previous meeting, and it really cleared things up. Other than that, I thought this was really straightforward. Didn't have any comments.
Through the chair. I think the, just making it less potential for politicization of just pretty broad approvals in order to get projects built that are, that are approved, I think is, is important. The Block 21 is a unique situation that hopefully doesn't happen again. And usually, when a delay happens to get, you know, building permits and such and start construction, there isn't really activity going on the site, and so you wouldn't notice it. And I think that this, this new ordinance would, you know, would likely see that pretty much 99% of the time. So that's, I think, overall, just we want to avoid politicization of things like this and just keep it at a staff level.
Thank you.
Through the chair. My fellow Commissioners have made excellent comments. I can't add too much to it, just to sort of reiterate that extensions of this nature already exist for anyone with a tentative map. And often, the largest projects you see in the city are, practically speaking, always going to have a tentative map. So I thought it was an interesting point that staff made, that oftentimes it's smaller projects that don't have tentative maps and therefore aren't able to avail themselves. And coincidentally, smaller projects probably often have even bigger challenges in financing as they're not, you know, if it's someone doing a duplex, they don't have the same commercial loan options as a big developer. So this makes sense to me in sort of a leveling the playing field way, and I think it's already been said that, you know, the demolition of a building is unrelated to this. So this, to me, is leveling the playing field. It's not greenlighting anything, and it seems like a common sense revision, and I appreciate the clarification on the findings as well. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Julia, for the great report in addressing this issue quickly since we saw it a few weeks ago and cleaning this up. I think it's beneficial for everybody. Do we have anybody who wants to make a recommendation?
Through the chair, I would recommend a motion to City Council for adoption of an ordinance to extend, amend San Mateo Municipal Code, Section 27.08.087, to allow for extensions of up to two years for approved planning applications, and determine the amendment is exempt from further environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15061B3.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ashley, could you please call the vote?
Yes, Chair Nutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0. We'll close this item and move on to item number two.
Item number two, Draft Objective Design Standards for Multifamily and Mixed Use Residential Developments, PA 2019-016.
Thank you. We will start with the staff presentation, clarifying questions from Commission and public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. We want to create an environment where all We want to create an environment where all viewpoints can be heard, so please do not speak out of turn or disrupt the meeting through clapping, jeering, or other public displays for or against speakers. Once the public comment period is closed, the commission will deliberate and provide input and guidance to staff. This item is a study session, so there will be no action taken on the draft objective design standards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Richstone, Associate Planner with the City of San Mateo, here to introduce San Mateo's multifamily and residential mixed-use objective design standards. So our objective design standards have been developed through a team of the city, including Manera Sandier, which is our planning manager and zoning administrator, myself, and another associate planner, Wendy, and through a team of our consultants, MIG, including Laura Stetson, right here, who is a principal, and Christine Thompson, which is, which she is on Zoom. A quick agenda for today's presentation, because it is quite long, is we'll start with an overview and kind of the purpose of what objective design standards are, talk about our progress on the draft standards, segue into questions for the commission that staff would like feedback on, and then close out with where we are in the process and the schedule going forward. So for the process of the objective design standards, it's broken up into four phases. We started in the spring of 2020, right when COVID happened. And that phase is kind of the discovery phase, and that lasted about a year into 2021, which is where we analyzed best practices and kind of went on a fact-finding mission to see what other jurisdictions we're doing and what kind of the city, our direction, wanted to go. Phase two was defining what ODS looks like for San Mateo, doing focused outreach to residents and developed, and community input. And phase three, which is kind of where we are today, started in 2022 to now, this is where we were tightening up our draft ODS, we were writing documents, we were creating, or are creating graphics and exhibits. We did additional outreach to developers and the public, and we are at the study session right now. And we will move into, hopefully, final revisions, Planning Commission public hearing, and then a City Council hearing sometime in the fall, winter months. And we are now in stage three. A little background, kind of touched on it already, about our community engagement. We had our first community and developer workshop in 2021, where we were really asking the community to give us feedback on architectural styles, how, how the community wanted massing and transitions and other elements to be addressed in the city, trying to parse out what were the hot topics of the community, community-wide. And then that was closely followed by a planning commission study session, asking those same questions, and staff took those comments and started writing the ODS. We did a second community engagement and workshop outreach this summer, a few, a month or two ago, where we did a development roundtable and a community outreach meeting, where we were asking more focus questions to the community after staff had been working with this document for quite a while. We recently published a very draft version of the language online, which is also included in the staff report. And from the staff report and the language included, we've received several written comments, and some were received today after the publication of the packet, to kind of coalesce the comments. Many of the comments dealt with open space, a desire to include architectural, or, yeah, architectural design standards for downtown, protecting historic buildings, pointing out some sections of the code that might not be objective, and stressing the importance of transitions between taller buildings and smaller buildings. And here we are today, our second study session. And I will transition to Laura Stetson, who is part of our MIG team.
Members of the commission and members of the public, thank you for being patient and allowing us to spend this time to get here this evening. This is a culmination of a lot of work with your community and with your staff. I'm Laura Stetson. I am with MIG. I'm a principal with the firm, and we are joined via Zoom by Christine Thompson, the project manager, who's been working steadily on this project. She and I are a good tag team because she is a architect and I am a zoning code nerd. And so we work together to make sure that the standards respond to what the development community is looking for, but also are written in language that is implementable. And so we have a presentation that'll take about 25 minutes or so, and we wanted to walk through it because this has been a long process, and so the benefit of people watching this evening, or who may want to rewind and watch later, we're covering a lot of information about architectural terms and the detail that is in the proposed objective design standards, because we want to make sure that they are tailored and are exactly right for San Mateo. This is a complicated process. I have worked on a number of objective design standards in various communities throughout the state and have looked at other ones that have been done. And I think one of your comment writers even suggested, oh, look at City of Santa Barbara. Those are a really good set. Well, Santa Barbara is an incredibly unique community that has one, pretty much one architectural style for their downtown area. And so what's right for Santa Barbara isn't going to be right for San Mateo, or is not going to be right for San Carlos, or Palo Alto, or Los Angeles. These things need to reflect the character, the soul, if you will, of the community, and they need to be written in a way that aren't going to create cookie-cutter buildings over time, that provide the flexibility for the creativity that you're looking for, so that San Mateo can continue to evolve and be a very unique community on the peninsula. So that, those are some introductory remarks, and I have to give a lot of thanks to Laura Richstone and to Wendy, who dug in and, under the direction of Manera, to really make sure that the standards are reflective of what they know about the community. So it was a very much a team effort. So let's start with why the city is creating objective design standards, and what objective design standards are, I'll use the term ODS, kind of rhymes, sounds like odious, so I don't, I don't like to do that that much, but what ODS represent and why they're being prepared. But they regulate the design of new multifamily housing and any mixed-use project that is at least two-thirds residential, in terms of the square footage. These are criteria that have been put together to respond to state law, but importantly, to implement housing element policy as well. These are things that, it's not just because the state said to do it, but because your housing element has said, we're looking for ways to streamline housing development and get housing built. The objectives are also to reflect what the community has said, and ensure that the ODS reflect the priorities that you have learned as you've been going through your general plan update program. And Laura, I think we, have I stalled out?
Let's try this.
There we go. So we've talked about why the city is creating ODS, but we, and we've talked about the projects that it applies to, but we also want to discuss where, geographically, the, the objective design standards apply. But first, we indicated the why, because the state legislature has clearly recognized that there is a shortage of housing, and particularly affordable housing and rental units throughout the state. And the goals of the legislation is to remove the hurdles. There have been some bad actors that have, and I mean cities and counties, that have put roadblocks up to housing development. But the legislation is meant to address everybody equally, and that's embodied in the Housing Accountability Act, but also a couple of laws that have been enacted since about 2019. And you've probably had exposure to some of these, SB 35, SB 330, and then a couple of other ones that have come into play in just the last year that allow residential uses in commercial zones. I mentioned the housing element and that that establishes the policy foundation for doing objective design standards. I mentioned that they apply to pretty much everything except for a standalone, single-family unit. So if somebody comes in and wants to put a home in an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU on their lot, the objective design standards will apply. Or a duplex. And so this, it runs the gamut from your lower scale up to the higher scale, and as we said, mixed-use development. So what inspiration does one use to create the objective design standards? Where do they come from? These are additive to zoning. So your zoning code addresses height, setbacks, how many parking spaces are required, the amount of open space that's required in a development. The objective design standards get to the three-dimensionality of a, of a project. So what's the articulation on it? How do you design a site so it works well? Where do you put the driveways? Where do you put the parking so it relates well? So we build on the zoning ordinance, what is not addressed in the zoning ordinance. About halfway through the process, the city staff recognized, well, gee, there are specific plans that also have squishy language in it that isn't objective. And so the specific plans, parts of them need to be pulled into the objective design standards as well. And so that's the inspiration that's drawn there. So you have your zoning code, you have the specific plans. And then there are also, the city has had for some time, multifamily design guidelines. They weren't binding, words like should, it would be nice if, can you please do this? But the commission nor staff didn't have, you know, the absolute authority to say, Mr. or Mrs. Developer, these are what the guidelines say, you need to do this. They're merely suggestions. But there's a lot of good information in the design guidelines that can be translated to design standards, and so we took a really hard look at those. And then the other critical piece is the input from the planning commission that we had a couple of years ago, the input from the community, our review of best practices, and our knowledge of best practices from our work throughout California and elsewhere, and the development community. We had two workshops with the development community, and they were very helpful, and particularly said, you know, don't tie our hands, we've, you know, we need to maintain our creativity. Don't make the design, the objective design standards so strict that we can't do what we like to do as designers. And so that, that was an important, very important input. The document that you have before you this evening and that was available to the public is a draft. You might have looked at it and said, well, this doesn't look like a very graphic document for design standards. And it is, as Laura indicated, a working draft. Before we put something together that we want to bring forward to the planning commission for a hearing, we need to make sure the standards are right before we get the graphics and images pulled together. But the end document will be, will look something like this that you see on the screen here. It'll be a highly graphic, very nice-looking document that will sit outside of the zoning code. So a developer will look at the zoning code, there'll be a cross-reference that say, in addition to these development standards, you need to go look at the objective design standards document, which will be adopted by City Council resolution. And if you're in a specific plan area, you need to look at the specific plan as well. So it's going to be a little bit more complicated than the specific plans. The reason that the objective design standards aren't being adopted into the zoning code is because it, if something's not quite working well, rather than have to go through the process of amending the zoning code, it's going to be a lot easier to amend the objective design standards. And I think, Zach, you were a big proponent of that, and Manera was as well, as we were talking about, you know, how to put these into effect. So that's how it's going to work, zoning code, objective design standards, and for some folks, specific plans as well. So the progress draft is very comprehensive, and we feel we're, you know, it's almost there, it's almost ready to be put into its form with graphics and look nice and with a lot of cross-references. And so the key topic areas that are addressed are these that you see on the screen in front of you and the folks at home. It's site planning, so you move from this, you know, one-dimensional, has everything layout on a site, to the building design and architecture, so the three-dimensionality part of it, and then the detailing of the site itself, the landscaping, the open space, and lighting, what other things are on a site that are important to make sure that they're good standards for, things like utility boxes, transformers, where the garbage collection areas are, so those things that help a site work well, those are the little details that are addressed. And then there's a whole other section on additional standards for specific plan areas. And this is only specific plans that allow residential development. There are, I think we said there are seven specific plans that are addressed in the ODS. The city has more specific plans than that, but there are a couple that are built out, and there are a couple that don't allow residential use, and so those are not included in the ODS. Just to emphasize, this is residential. If anything, it's a commercial development, or industrial development, or a public facility development, those are not affected by this, and, and no processes will change from today. So site planning, you can see the various things that site planning addresses, where the building sits, how pedestrians move around the site, particularly with regard to parking, making sure that, you know, pedestrian ways and cars don't mix. So those are important for, for site design. Probably the medias part of the ODS deal with the building design and architecture, and this is something that the public talked a lot about, is making sure that you don't have big boxes that look the same. So how do you, and you need to make sure that there is a relationship to adjacent lower-scale development and single-family in particular, so that's transitioning. What do you do with roofs to make sure that they work well with the architecture? Doors and windows and designing for entry and security really can affect how a building works and, and works well. Materials and colors, you might think, gee, why would we want to regulate materials and colors? Well, we're not saying you need to use burnt sienna on all your buildings. It's simply saying, here's a range of things that you can do to really mix it up on a building with different colors and materials to create some interest in a building. And then also, there are a couple of regulations that relate to existing buildings. Just as kind of a sidebar note, I worked in a community once that wanted white buildings. It was an all, pretty much an all-residential community, and not, they, they said not just white, but they gave you the Sherman Williams paint colors that you could use to paint your building. That's not what San Mateo is doing. I think something that you probably found when you were looking through the ODS is that there are choices. So people are allowed, you know, pick three of the five or five of the seven, but we're not going to give you paint color chips to, to use. Landscaping, I wanted to stop here for a sec because there was a comment or a question, I think from the Sierra Club, that said there needs to be more open space addressed as part of the, the ODS. And in the staff report, staff emphasized that the numbers, in terms of how much open space is required, are not being affected by the ODS. That's living in the zoning code. What the ODS do is talk about the quality of that open space and what can be used for open space, and we're going to get to that in just a minute. I mentioned other, other site features, the accessory structures, but importantly, utilities, mechanical equipment, whether it's on the ground or on the roof, you don't want to see it. You know, you want your lights to go on, but you don't want to see where they go on from. It's nice to keep those things hidden because they can really start to affect a site design. In terms of the specific plans, this map and this list shows you where the specific plans are that are affected by ODS. It covers, you know, just eyeballing it, maybe, you know, a fifth of the city or so. And what we were finding when we started to really dissect the specific plans is that there was inconsistency in some cases, and overlap with what was going on on El Camino Real. And so we were looking for a way to reconcile that, and your staff spent a lot of time looking through those standards as well and saying, well, what does, you know, an effective sidewalk width of 10 feet mean? And how can we make sure that that's consistent along the length of El Camino Real, whether or not it's in a specific plan area? So there was a lot of thought put into the specific plans. Importantly, though, the standards have not changed from what is in the specific plans. What was simply done was those things that were subjective with regard to design were brought into the ODS and made objective. And so if there was a requirement for a public plaza of 10 by 10 that was suggested, it came into the objective design standard as a plaza that is 10 by 10 that is required, or at least 10 by 10. Anything having to do with the public realm, streets, pedestrian ways, anything that the public owns, is not in the objective design standards, and that will stay in the specific plan. That's why I mentioned, for a That's why I mentioned, for a developer that has a project in the specific plan, zoning code, ODS, and specific plan, they've got to look at three documents. Laura, and Manera, and Wendy, and Julia, everybody's there to help them through that process. That's what they're there for. Recognizing the scale of buildings in San Mateo, the ODS breaks things out into three building typologies, from low-rise to mid-rise to high-rise. We know that there is a limit on building heights in San Mateo, and that is being discussed as part of the general plan program and might be something that is reexamined through a voter initiative or whatever comes out of the general plan. But we wanted to recognize the fact that any developer requesting a density bonus has the ability to ask for additional building height. And so we wanted to make sure that the ODS accounts for that as well, whereas buildings, you know, over eight stories might not be allowed as a matter of right today, they could be in the future, or somebody could have a taller building through a density bonus program. I mentioned that the ODS really want to make sure that there's flexibility. That's what we heard again and again, is don't tie us down, let's accommodate all types of architecture, provide choices. But what if a developer looks at all the objective design standards and says, you know, I've got this creative idea that nobody's ever thought of, it could never have been imagined when you were putting your ODS together, I want to do something different? They can. They just aren't subject to the same streamlined process. They would be able to come through the planning commission in more of a discretionary manner. So that flexibility is there. If somebody doesn't want to comply, they can go through that process. If they are looking for streamlined, they would comply with the ODS. So it's a choice a developer would make. Let me take a pause for just a sec. I was going, I want to get through the whole presentation before we go to the commission, but before we get to the detail of the objective design standards, this is largely for the benefit of the public watching tonight. We wanted to go through some terms that are important, that are used. I know at least two of you have architectural backgrounds, so I apologize if this is stuff you see in your sleep, but we'll go through these terms pretty quickly. We have a lot of slides, and I'm not going to pause on any of them for any length of time. But the first standard that we want to talk about is wall plane offset. That's when the wall either pops out or in, so a recess or a protrusion. In a lot of cases, it's going to be a pop-out. So there are quite a few standards that talk about wall plane offsets because these can really add texture and interest in a building. It can happen in many different ways. You can see on this building, it's moving in and out as it goes across the facade of the building. You know, this building's a little bit more plain, but it does use that offset to create some depth in between the individual units so that you can see their individual units. In this case, there's a change in color, so not only is the building moving out, but you've got a change in color and you've got a change in material as well to help highlight that offset. Here, same thing, different color, different material, and a pop-out, and you're also seeing some bay windows on that structure. And then a couple other examples here, just so that we can be thorough and the public understands what a wall plane offset is or building articulation. Step back is when a, when, you know, an entire part of the building is moved back from one adjacent to it. So in this case, the building is stepping back above the third floor. Here you have just more of a mild step back, if you will. Here, the step back's creating some usable space on this building, nice little building in Pasadena. Same thing here is, these building step backs are used for active space, not, you know, not necessarily balconies, but they could be either private or common roof decks. And sometimes folks use the word "step back" to also mean a transition, which I'll get to next here. So that you have a, step backs are being used to transition from that one-story adjacent single-family home in Berkeley, so that you've got something that's two stories adjacent to that lot, but then it goes up to three stories as it steps back and even higher stories as it step back even further. This building, you can see, is doing something similar, but along the back part of it, as it's transitioning down to a single-family zone. Here, you've got a building that goes from three, to the one next to it is two, to a one-story building. Something important to keep in mind when you're looking at transition is, you know, in a single-family zone, it's not what's there on the lot today, but what the zoning allows. So even though you might have a one-story building there, zoning might allow two stories and you don't want to penalize the adjacent multifamily development just because there's a one-story building there too, there might, you know, in the future, there might be a two-story to two-story relationship. In some cases, landscape screening is used to help provide that transition, and the ODS for San Mateo do include requirements for trees, dense landscaped trees that get at least 20 feet high at maturity, to help provide that screen where you have, you know, a direct adjacency between multifamily and single-family. Color. Colors can be used to, as contrasting colors to create interest, to divide something up. It can be very simple, as these buildings illustrate, as you've really just got two colors, white, if you consider white a color, on the trim, and then the blue on the body of the building. Here, you're using some different shades of blue-gray, as well as a white, to have contrasting colors. Here, black and yellow and white are used, and then on the adjacent building, even some red to make it pretty interesting and very European-looking, almost. Contrasting colors on this building, also in San Mateo. This is a building in Emeryville, I think, Manera referred to this as that crazy building in Emeryville that has, you know, a lot of different colors going on there. And what I thought was interesting about this building is they were trying to use colors and different movement in the building heights to break up the building, but you don't really see much wall plane offset or any unique treatment of the windows there to create an interest in the building. And they're trying to use color in that regard, and some people might find that that doesn't quite work as well as intended. Couple other, just down the homestretch here on the objective design standards terminology. We said that mixed use is affected by this, so when you have residential over commercial. I'm going to come back to this building in a bit because there's a lot going on here that we might want to talk about. And then also, residential over commercial in a, what would be termed a higher-rise building, in terms of the objective design standards. Doorways, you can do a lot with doorways to create interest at the street level for pedestrians by recessing them. And I'm just showing examples here of at grade level, there are different ways to create interest, not through, just through recessed doorways, and we'll get to that in just a bit. Parking garages and screening, how cars get in. If it's a, I guess this would be almost a tuck-under or incorporated into the building itself, making sure that you're using some type of decorative screening at the street level. And this is a building at San Francisco that takes it to a whole different level, and this is the site of an entire parking garage. And there are requirements for wonderful treatments for parking garages. I don't know how much of a chance you've had to really dig into the objective design standards. I think you have, because we've gotten some great comments through staff on why certain standards were proposed. So for the benefit of the public, we wanted to just touch on some of the whys of things that are in the proposed objective design standards. Starting with site planning, there is a requirement in the central business district area to really emphasize the pedestrian orientation through seating areas or plazas at the frontage. A requirement for very clearly delineated pedestrian paths to get people from a parking lot or from a sidewalk to a front door, so that a different use of materials, so people aren't interacting with cars unnecessarily and that they are clearly shown where they need to go. There is a requirement for passeos on blocks that have, buildings that have more than 600 linear feet of frontage, so to try and break that up. Lot of requirements for screening of parking lots, if it's surface parking and it's facing a street, to screen it from view from the pedestrians. And then a couple other images there of, again, of the parking lot screening. Massing and articulation, this is probably where there are the most standards, talking about how do you break up the massing of a building. And so we talked about choices that are provided in the objective design standards. And for low and mid-rise, some of the key features, it's saying, do at least two of these. For high-rise, at least three. And this is one of the key questions we have for you at the end, you know, are these the right ways to articulate a building? Is it being too restrictive, not restrictive enough, or not directive enough? The reason I wanted to pause on this building is because there are a lot of things going on in this building with regard to window treatments and eaves and balconies and the building moving in and out horizontally and vertically. You know, is there a reason to limit how many treatments you have, as we've done, as we've suggested for color? There are quite a few standards for wall plane breaks, and so for low-rise, it's going to be different, that you need to break it up every 15 to 30 feet. The numbers that we've selected are based on the space inside the building and the guidance from our in-house architects on what, you know, a good space is. You don't want to break it up so that it's creating funny rooms inside a building. And so that's also why there's a range and not just something that says, break it up every 40 feet, you got to do something with it. For mid-rise buildings, there's the requirement for the wall plane breaks, but that a building be divided into pieces, that there be a base, a body, and a top for the taller buildings. And this might be a point of discussion as well, just because of, when I've been looking around in different cities, some of the more modern buildings don't necessarily have a top, a clearly defined top. So that's something that we might want to discuss too. The wall plane breaks for the mid-rise and the high-rise are greater than they are for the low-rise. And the developers have the choice of, for vertical wall plane breaks, to do a couple of different things to break it up. And recognize that buildings that sit on a corner need to celebrate that corner and do something to draw attention to what's going on in the corner. And so there's a requirement for a tower, or steeple, or some other treatment that makes the corner a little bit more interesting. Similar to the six- and seven-story mid-rise buildings, anything eight-plus needs to have a top body base. And there are options in the draft objective design standards indicating how you can choose how many stories to do that for these much taller buildings. And also requirement for the corner treatments, as you can see here on this building as well. For ground-floor requirements, for mixed-use buildings, for the commercial piece, there's a real focus on window treatments, glazing doors, so people can see in and out, and it creates a much more vibrant pedestrian environment by having that. For mixed-use, to have a taller ceiling, and, you know, is 15 feet the right height? We've heard, you know, 12, some cities use 12, some use 15, but something that's a little taller at least than just your standard residential eight to 10. And then for the residential development, if a residence is on a ground floor, just to create a sense of, a little bit of sense of privacy, that that entrance be raised between 18 and 48 inches through a stoop or some other treatment. And that's just for a building where the residential individual unit entrance faces onto a primary or secondary street. Lot of attention was paid to these transitions and screenings adjacent to lower-scale residential buildings. And so this indicates what the options are. And we built into it, you know, to avoid what people sometimes call wedding cake buildings, or in a case like this where you see the building going boop-boop-boop, you know, kind of stepping back like steps, if you were to turn it on its side, you could step up it. For the smaller-scale buildings, we're saying, look, you can either do the step back, you know, five feet and then an additional, or 10 feet and an additional five for the higher floors, or push the entire building back 12 feet if you want to have a straight wall. So there's the option of having this wedding cake-type approach, or just pushing the entire building towards a higher setback. And we mentioned, evergreen trees are required along the boundary line. Roof form, to avoid people getting crazy with roof forms, there is a proposed limit on no more than two variations in roof form. So what these ABs, ABs show you on these images is, you know, the As are, in the top are a peaked roof form, and the B is more of a, is the slanted roof form over the, over that balcony there. So no more than two variations, and some other things, just to make sure that the roofs are interesting and varied but aren't going crazy. Windows, doors, and entries, quite a few regulations in this regard. Couple of pages on windows, that they should be either recessed at least six inches or protrude. There is a provision that says, if you've chosen an architectural style that doesn't necessarily have windows that are inset, like a curtain wall window or something, that there's flexibility to do that as well. But, you know, if you're going to push a window in, push it in to something that creates the depth that you're looking for. Same for commercial entries, they need to be inset or protrude. Inset's probably preferred because it gives you a little bit more protection from the elements as people are going in and out of a building. Colors and materials have been put together, and there is a requirement that a building incorporate at least four different combinations of colors and materials. So it could be, you know, three different colors and another material, two and two, one, three, but no more than six, so that it's not crying to do too much. And I didn't necessarily look at this building to see if it complies with that standard. There is a prohibition on neon colors, and that's a question that we have for you at the end, is, does the city feel that that's too restrictive, or should we celebrate neon colors? Finally, there's a requirement that sustainable building materials be used on the outside of a building, and those are defined in the code as well. We're almost at the end. Thanks for your patience here. Landscaping, there are recommended treatments for the landscape areas. I think what is particularly nice is that the objective design standards say that green roofs are a perfectly acceptable form of open space, long as you do something that, you know, makes it quite nice and usable, such as a dog run or community garden. If you've got more than 50 units, those could also be used for open space areas. And then, before we just touch on the specific plans, I wanted to note that this is an example of a utility box or a transformer, that if it were just sitting right there out in front of the building, might not look too attractive. And so this particular example is from the city of Anaheim. They have a whole booklet on how you need to screen above-ground equipment. That was the only community that I saw that had that, but I found that very interesting. There's a push in the ODS to put transformers below ground. I understand that PG&E pushes back and pushes back and pushes back on that. So if they're going to insist on an above-ground transformer, don't put it in open space area, don't put it where people are going to trip over it, and don't put it where it really distracts from the functionality and the appearance of the site. The specific plan areas, the one, the key thing that I wanted to mention is downtown. And there was a half-page discussion in the agenda report of the downtown, and there are two documents currently guiding development in downtown. The ODS touch fairly lightly on design standards for downtown and don't address historic at all because those are in a, under a different review scheme. The city's intent after the general plan is adopted is to go back and look comprehensively at the downtown design guidelines/standards to come up with something that reflects general plan policy direction. So I almost say that what's in the ODS are kind of a holding pattern of those things that are subjective, that could be made objective, but there wasn't a push to overhaul the objective design standards for downtown at this point in time. So what's next up? We are looking for very detailed feedback from you and the public tonight because we want to take that feedback and fold them into a complete, comprehensive set of objective design standards that are fully illustrated, fully graphicked, if you will, and to bring them back to the planning commission council before December of this year. And that's an important date because this is a project being funded by a grant, and Laura or Manera, I believe that the grant funds need to be spent... And Laura Ermanera, I believe that the grant funds need to be spent by December 31st of 2023. And so this has been a long process up to this point, but we think we are, we know we're at the finish line, looking for good comments from you. There were five questions in the agenda report. I wanted to set the framework for those, and then we'll bring up a slide that has all of those five on there. So Mr. Chair, it'll help guide the discussion with the commission this evening. The first relates to massing and transition, and the fact that the ODS provide a lot of information and requirements for facade breaks, for step backs, for detailing. But are there articulation options that have been overlooked? Or those that are in there that need refined, or maybe are too overbearing? And so that's the first question with regard to articulation and massing and transition. And so the key transition question relates to the adjacencies of R1 and R2 development, and is there another option that should be considered beyond the step back or the pushing the building back combined with the dense tree planting? Colors and materials is for this minimum four, maximum of six, too constraining. Do you want to provide something different? And how do you feel about neon colors? Downtown, have, has the team effectively translated what was subjective in the guidelines and the core requirements into objective standards? And are there, is there anything else that needs to be included at this point in time before the city does take a more comprehensive look and treatment of downtown? With regard to open space, are there other design treatments for open space that should be considered? And then lastly, flexibility. Is there enough flexibility in the ODS? And so with that, I am going to indicate that for the public, if they have questions after this evening, or have comments after this evening, to please share them with Laura Richstone. Here is her email address. And then there is also a website with materials, so people can review what's been presented, including that this evening's presentation will be posted there presumably, so folks can go and look at that again. So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you and ask that you guide your commissioners through this discussion. And we are here to respond to any questions. We also have Christine Thompson from MIG on via Zoom. And I'll give it back to you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So at this point, we would like to address staff with any clarifying questions. And I know that a lot of work has been done by this commission independently and working with staff through different clarification items already. Yet, we are here to voice our questions in public. And so please, whoever wants to start this discussion, feel free, and we'll go from there.
Through the chair. I'm very nervous right now. It's a lot, a lot here. Thanks to staff, to MIG, and to actually all the public commenters as well, everything we've seen thus far in the letters, and we'll get more from commenters probably. I'm, I think I've got eight or 10 clarifying questions. I've got a handful kind of high level, just want to make sure that we in the public is understanding the framework. And then I've got a couple more, probably what you're looking for, very specific ones where I want to make sure I'm understanding word for word what we're getting at. And so starting from the top, just talking about the process strategy, I think something was mentioned about the process to amend, or can't remember what word you had used, bring this back and change it, and it's not going in the zoning code, it's on the side, and that makes it easier to amend. Is there, can you just talk a little more about the anticipated process of changes to this after December?
Yes. So we are proposing to adopt via resolution, which makes it easier to do tweaks and changes going on. The plan is to implement ODS by the end of the year and see how it plays out, either within the first two years or however many projects, and make those necessary tweaks in a revised version as we see how these are implemented. So the plan is not just to adopt the regulations and leave them be. We do anticipate coming back and making them better for San Mateo.
Thank you. Building on that, and the, see how it plays out, have you, have you lined these up, I know they're in draft form, have you lined them up against, you know, a particular building or tested, kind of ground-truth them against what is already out there in San Mateo today?
So we have been looking at the standards internally with projects in the pipeline, and how they do, we do not adhere to the standards. Applying them to existing buildings, it's a little more difficult, especially the older buildings, not quite sure when they were adopted and if they were even subject to the design standards. But to the newer buildings in downtown and in the pipeline buildings, they were looked at in the development of ODS.
Thanks. I couldn't help it, just as I looked at the photos, I was kind of, you know, doing it in my head, thank you. The encouple process, the way ODS is applied, you touched on an applicant not, sort of taking the choice and electing not to use ODS, going through a discretionary design review, just knowing that the ODS kind of responds to state laws. Do you know if they elect to sort of do discretionary design review, do they not get to sort of invoke the HAA or SB 330 or some portion of a state law that kind of is prompting the ODS?
Through the chair, if I could speak to that. Good evening, Manira Sandeep, Planning Manager. So should an applicant choose to go through the discretionary design review process but have an HAA project, they would still be subject to other sections of the HAA code that allow for streamlined review, for example, five hearings maximum. However, because they're not choosing the Objective Design Standards path, the city would have discretion to say whether or not, you know, they can be approved or not, or if they need further conditions or changes to the design.
Very helpful, thank you. And one other thing to double-check, in the world of density bonus law, there's waivers and concessions. And so while we're setting up Objective Design Standards, making it very clear kind of what has to be done if one wants streamlining, it is still possible, I think, to go and get waiver or request, I suppose, for an applicant, waivers and concessions that sort of would allow them to not comply with the ODS, is that right?
Yes. So ODS and state law lie on top of each other. So just because you follow ODS doesn't mean you cannot avail yourself of waivers or concessions. And that was part of the thought process staff used while developing ODS, is the notion or the knowledge that standards that go too far will just be waived for density bonus projects. So some standards that might not go far enough, they were pulled back because developers, such as open space, indicated that they generally ask for waivers anyway. So that was in staff's mind as we were developing ODS, concessions and waivers for density bonus.
Okay, thanks. I now have a handful of questions that relate to the particular text. And I don't know if it's possible to pull up particular lines of text if I say go to 4.1.1.b. Is that possible?
If you give me one moment.
Of course, yeah.
Through the chair, just wanted to confirm, you're just asking if it would be possible, but we are still in the clarifying questions phase. Do you want us to actually pull it up right now, or?
I do, thank you. I do, with apologies for, yeah, giving you time to do that. I want to understand a number of pieces of actual text, and I think the best way to do it is to pull that particular standard up on the screen.
What was the section?
4.1.1.b.
Can we all see it?
Thank you. Okay, so articulation details on each building, detail facade articulation, minimum depth of 18 inches shall be created. Does that say how, how many articulations are needed? Or is that a reference to, like, A through G? Basically, is when it says high-rise, do three, and mid-rise, do two? It's sort of saying that, it says do this articulation, and then it says, in addition to plane breaks below, do all these things. So I don't know, is it, is the articulation different than A through G?
To clarify, good question. The intent was to say if you have a recessed window, or balcony, or a bay window, let's say, to provide actual articulation, move that at least be 18 inches. So that feature has to be at least 18 inches in depth, maybe recessed or projected, but the amount or types of articulation, A through G, is what you're choosing.
Oh, very helpful. And I will, that's not a comment, but it's an observation of something that I'm trying to understand through reading it. So, and then one other architectural question here, you are mentioning cornices in A, and also horizontal moldings in G. I, it's been a long time since I've been in architecture school, I kind of thought a cornice is a form of horizontal molding. And so I wouldn't, I don't know if that's, sorry, trying to keep it clarifying questions, is that, those are intended to be different, I suppose?
Christine, sorry, I'll defer to MIG, Christine Thompson, who is our architect.
A lot of times the cornice is, is a roof for upper top part, and a molding can be more gentle, but not always. And so there, we have also definitions with this to try to clarify things like that.
Okay, thank you. And so just hang here for one second. So 4.1.1.b.f., window edges that are at least three inches deep. If we jump to 4.6.1, which you don't have to do, I'll just tell you, it mentions window recesses of six inches. And I was, and I mean this to be a clarifying question, not a comment, but I was curious if those were in conflict.
I do not know they might be. It's a draft, so.
Okay.
Highlight it, and we'll double-check if there are inconsistencies. Thank you.
Okay. One more to jump through, jump to, could we go to 4.5.1? This is roofline variation?
Oh, no. Sorry, I have to stop sharing for a moment. There we go. What was, sorry, pardon me, what was the?
Yeah, 4.5.1, and then it's A and B. Yeah, thank you. This is one I just didn't quite understand what, I know what the general goal is, but specifically if I was trying to design something that complied with this, I wasn't totally sure. Variations, does a low-rise, 30% minimum, does that mean like 30% of the roof along the linear frontage of the building needs to be different than the other 70%?
I think we were, I mean, Christine, please chime in.
Yeah, that had been the intent. I mean, so a lot of this is about roof, oh, I'm sorry, roofline variety. And so the question is really about how to create variations of height and form, and the idea being that if you, if, that you'd want to see a variation rather than a straight line.
Got it, okay. So we're avoiding the straight line, and at low-rise, we're doing it over, could I say 30% of the frontage? And at mid-rise, I'm doing it over 20% of the frontage?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Sorry to jump around, 4.2.2, this is ground floor residential entries, there you go. This, so entries to ground floor residential uses, I'm assuming you mean, and I think this more in the presentation, you mean units versus uses? I think if you're saying uses, you would, I don't think you intend to include the lobby in this.
No, you're correct. That's a good clarification.
Okay.
We'll change the document.
There's no way to do this without getting into the minutia, is there?
I appreciate it.
Okay. 4.7.1.a, this is about colors. Okay, so it's going to say in here somewhere, the colors of the same palette shall be differentiated by three different shades. So that, that would mean I could do a gray building, but I'm going to do at least three different shades of gray, for example?
Yeah, so I think when we were writing that, we wanted to move away from monochromatic buildings, and we came up with at least three shades offset from a dark to a light would provide enough distinction to see a color difference.
Oh, three shades of difference?
Yes.
Okay, then a follow-up, what's a shade? And shouldn't it be hue instead of palette? That was one of my. I don't know.
We can, we can, we will clarify more in a revised document.
I have been, I have been in a situation where, and we were looking at like contrasting colors for people that with limited sort of sight, and there was some way they had, sorry, keep this clarifying somehow, not a comment, they had some way to like quantify contrast in terms of shades. So just, thank you for that. Couple more, 4.7.1.d, this is on sustainability. And maybe I could have organized this at the top, it was more of a general question. Did you pull all of these from somewhere, like, and I should have gone back and looked at the Climate Action Plan, for example, did these come from a particular place, or were they aggregated?
I'm going to defer to Christine and Laura.
Yeah, they were aggregated.
Okay. And then produced within Northern California, do you plan to define Northern California?
Yeah, we had been talking about whether a distance was, was too restrictive, basically. And so, so I think that's, that's why it was the Northern California versus Southern California as a, as a distinguisher.
Okay. And we can stay right here for one more, and I'm almost done, everyone. We, right down below an E here, we're, I think it's saying that we're prohibiting vinyl, even for doors and windows. I think I saw a little bit up from here, vinyl listed as a, as a possible window material. And I don't know exactly where that was. I think if you scroll up just a touch, there's like a acceptable building. I don't know if that rings a bell at all, or?
Well, we'll double-check to make sure that the table is consistent.
There's the vinyl, yeah. Do you, do we know, do we intend to allow vinyl or disallow vinyl? Just so I can frame a future comment?
I think it was the intent to disallow, but to the colors and materials question that we'll have later, up to the commission of if that's the correct way to go or not.
Okay, thank you. And then .b. Just a couple places where you're referencing, within the ODS, referencing the Munich Code and just saying, comply with the Munich Code, is there, is there like an intentional strategy to do that, or is it just inconvenient in places to do it? Because I'm just trying to imagine down the line, that's either a very helpful thing or potentially a very tricky thing to reference other documents, and this one changes and that one changes. I didn't know if you, you could just comment generally on the use of kind of references to code sections?
The references to code sections was, the intent was to make it easier for readers. So in this section, we're talking about lighting, and it's kind of like, we have these rules on lighting in this document, but hey, look at the zoning code and these extra standards. So it was more to be easier for the reader.
Okay, thank you. Last one, 7.3.1.a.3. This is downtown. Yeah, the last one, on upper floors, there's the three right there, on upper floors, use of windows such that only one bank of windows horizontally defines each floor. I was, I went back to the, I was comparing this against the downtown standards, and I think numbers one and numbers two. And I think numbers one and numbers two are sort of verbatim. And this one was reworded. And I wasn't quite sure if, I, I think the, the number three of this in the downtown plan talks about not having glass that spans vertically two or three floors. It's kind of like, keep it defined in there. But when I'm reading this, it's like one bank of windows. It almost seemed like, is there an intent architecturally to group all the windows with one, within one frame or one sash? I assume it's the former.
I'm not sure. I have to re-look at the downtown.
Okay.
The, we were trying to translate the downtown guidelines. And some of those guidelines don't necessarily align. So we'll take another look at it.
Okay. Through the chair, thank you. Those are all of my clarifying questions.
Thank you, Martin. Who would like to go next?
Through the chair, I just have a question. So I had the opportunity to meet with staff earlier today to answer questions of mine. Is this, do you, would you like me to repeat those questions? Or is that, I mean, it's not necessarily, it's not going to be the kind of questions that Martin went through with the document for?
Well, I think if it, if it would be helpful for the public, absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sure. Okay. So there's a few that I think could be helpful. But since I'm tailing Commissioner Wiggins, I am going to just piggyback on one of the questions he had from the document. And I noticed that there is no lighting to be above the roof of the building. And I'm just curious how that applies to outdoor rooftop gardens and terraces. Is that the intention, that they would not be lit?
The intention was to reduce lighting at night to have more of a dark sky community, so less light pollution. I don't, staff didn't look at it in that granularity, so great comment. We'll, we'll look at it again. So I can't answer your question.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So my first, my first question, not related to what Commissioner Wiggins had, is reading through the letters from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. I would like to know if the city is currently capable of retooling the, the objective design standard to be more like the Santa Barbara document that they had linked to and referenced. And then, yeah.
Through the chair, I think we would benefit from understanding, like, you know, what Commissioner Nugent means from retooling. Because if there are certain aspects of the Santa Barbara example that was cited by the comment letter, we would appreciate knowing, you know, to what extent you, you're asking the document be retooled. And as a commission, like how much of that you would like to recommend that staff do?
Sure, sure.
It's, we are working under a timeline. And so therefore, we are focused on, at this point, you know, getting feedback on the questions that we have.
Okay, okay. And, you know, it is a reference that they had in the letter. So I'm not, I don't want to speak for them necessarily. And then, so I'm going to, I'm just going to put that, oh, go ahead.
Through the chair, can I just remind the commission that we're in clarifying questions? So I just wanted to remind that that's where we are.
Okay. The other, the other question I have, or another question that I have, is just looking at, we had gone through some feedback or we've gathered feedback from, from the public. And a question I had was if there was a strong pressure from the public, not separate from like the developer community, there was strong pressure by the public to not manage design styles or channel these objective design standards to produce particular design styles of buildings?
What we, what we heard from the public was flexibility. Homeowners didn't want to be, for lack of a better word, pigeonholed into one or a few different types of architectural styles. They wanted to have variety. So that did align with the developers as well. But we, they didn't really talk about specific styles that they wanted to see. It was just freedom of choice is the big takeaway that we heard.
And through the chair, if I could add to that, we have heard from the community time and time again about concerns about downtown development and development in and around downtown following more traditional styles of architecture. However, there wasn't one style of architecture that emerged from those conversations. And the focus of the design standards was to be less prescriptive when it came to design styles, because design styles in and of themselves are not always objective.
Thank you, thank you. And then just more high level off of that question, how much public input, like how many different people did we get input from on these objective design standards?
Yes, so we did a first round of workshops in '21. I wasn't part of the project, but I was reading up on it. And we had about 30 members of the public and developers come out and participate then. We did another round of workshops this year, a few months ago. Same amount, maybe 20 or 15 for the developer roundtable and the public. And we've blasted our listserv. We've posted online, we've posted at facilities. So we've reached out and developers and members of the public have contacted us individually. So I think we've done a pretty good job of reaching out. And there might be more comments once a finalized version comes out at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you. I'm just helpful to know kind of like how many people are, have been involved so far. Let's see. A lot of the other questions that I had have been answered either through the presentation or are not applicable to this. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
The only question I have, I guess, to make sure, is, I guess, I want to just clarify the other documents that are part of zoning. There's, and so, you know, what are they all besides the zoning code and ODS? And I have a couple others listed, but I wanted to ask you, what are all the documents?
So to clarify, like if you were a developer, what would I give you essentially if you were looking to develop a project, correct?
Right.
Yes. Depends on where you are. But the base documents with the adoption of ODS would be our zoning code, which, those are the general height setback standards, open space. It would be the ODS standards. So those would be the base documents. And then if you, and then, you know, public work, street documents as well. And then if you were in a specific plan area, we would also hand you the specific plan. And we would say, read them, please, and then schedule a meeting with us, because some of them overlap. Some, the private development standards in the ODS, or excuse me, in the specific plan documents were not translated into ODS. It's only the, sorry. The public ride-by standards in the specific plans was not translated into ODS. It's only the private development standards. So it's a little mishmash at the moment. Once we're done with the general plan, the plan is to go back into these specific plans and update them. So in the future, it'd be more streamlined. And hopefully you would have one or two documents instead of three or four. So at least three, if you're in a specific plan area.
So the specific plan area would like, that's where the design, downtown design standards fall into that?
Yes, that's one area, yeah.
And then what about the historical design standards? Do that, does that fall into that as well?
Yeah, so.
Into that category?
Correct. So we have the, the downtown design, design standards and historic district. So that one document, that one document is kind of split into two, because not all of downtown is within the historic district, only part of it.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I had it all straight. Thank you.
Was that it, Margaret?
Yeah, that was it. All kinds of other good questions already.
Through the chair, I do not have any clarifying questions.
Okay. I have a few, and I will try and keep them short. And thank you for the time today answering questions that were on my mind. 4.2.1 addresses 15-foot-high ceilings on ground floor commercial. And I was curious if that means that that ground floor commercial will be doubled in a square, in a usable square footage equation for the building?
Yes, I, thank you for the comment earlier. I was able to look back into the zoning code. And the zoning code says above 15 feet would be double FAR. So if you're at 15 feet, as I interpret, then you would not be double.
Okay. That I can get to on the comments. For some of the building materials, can you explain to me why IFAS is a product that would not be appropriate in this setting for the ODS?
Yeah, I would defer to Christine Thompson and Laura Stetson.
That's the one stucco material, Christine?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, a lot of communities are basically just, you know, want, want stucco or stucco of a higher quality. They're having trouble with, with IFAS and how it stands up over time. And so it becomes a conversation point, like vinyl, chain link fence, you know, that they're, they're particular materials that, that are commonly, you know, not, not, not desirable.
Because of their durability and lifespan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
It also might be because of the manufacturing process and how bad it is for the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Which is what I find with vinyl.
On page 27d, under the sustainable materials, where materials shall be used for a minimum of 25% of the building. In item A, we're talking about organic compounds VO, I thought it was VOC, VOS. So does this, does this say, say that if you paint 25% of the exterior of the building, you will have met this requirement?
Christine?
Are we referencing a specific standard? Can you pull that up, Laura?
Yes. One moment.
We're on page 27 regarding sustainable materials.
So D says you need to use 25% of one of the blow. So would painting the building 25% meet this standard?
Yeah, painting, yeah, that's a good question. That's a really good question. We should look into that, because, because you're right, painting is a low VOS and that should be a C. But yeah, I think in general, it was, you know, it was hoped that it was a building material, not a covering. And so that also might be answered in terms of a definition about what constitutes a building material.
Okay, thank you. And the, the item directly below there, it's for prohibited materials. I've got a question, why foam molding would not be a product that would be appropriate for this ODS?
I think this is also coming out of the, what's been expressed by the community in terms of foam as a poor material for building. And then also a question of its durability over time.
Okay, then I'll comment on that later. 5.1.1. AA, use of hardscape materials. Is there any discussion or thought of including a minimum permeable surfaces on the hardscape? And have you seen it used elsewhere?
There, in writing it, there was no discussion about requiring an amount of permeability such that, great comment, maybe we should. The thought was these open spaces would generally be used for stormwater anyway. And how a developer wants to meet their stormwater calculations, we would leave it up to them. Either it's permeability here or maybe bioswells elsewhere. We were leaving more of a, a cache of options open.
Okay, thank you. Lead Transformers for a comment. Question on 6.2.2, the solar, solar replacement for, not the panels, but the support systems are being asked to be surface mounted or, or flush mounted or in an attic. What is the thought process for that requirement?
The goal is to have the solar equipment be as close to the roof as possible as opposed to equipment that can pop up and maybe rotate, because those do exist, and to reduce the size or height of a building. But we can take a closer look to see what our current buildings, larger ones in downtown have been using and to see, maybe parse it out between mid and high-rise versus low-rise development.
So I read that a little bit differently, because it says, and fixtures other than the solar collection panels. So maybe I can see your point there, if that was the object. But just curious. Let me see where that is. Sorry, you guys. This is just a question that I don't know, I don't know how applicable it is. But we were talking about structural bays with two-foot-deep window articulations. And it made me think that if I had a, if you had a 600-long, 600-long frontage, 80-foot-tall building, what square footage of your building would you lose building mass with that two-foot-deep window impeding into what possibly could be a floor plate?
I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay.
Can you, is the structural bays in the specific plan? Or is it in the general standards?
Vision of the gateway.
Okay, that's the specific plan. So the specific plan, the vision of the gateway is the specific plan. It's coming back. The, the specific plan had language about structural bays. And what we did to make it objective was put that two-foot. So maybe the question is, to your point, is two-foot too much, too little? That's why we're here, to talk about those things.
Perfect. So I may have misspoke, it might not be in the specific plan, because I did not mark my document as clearly as I should have, but I did catch it. And it just kind of, you know, kind of jumped out at me. If you've got a large project, it could impact your usable floor area.
True.
Okay, great. Should we go, are we done with clarifying questions? Great. Can we go to public comments, please?
Yes, Chair Ebner, we do have one public commenter in person. And if over Zoom you would like to comment, please raise your hand now. Okay, it looks like we have two public commenters, one in person and one over Zoom. Give me just a moment. Lori, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Chairman Ebner and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watsonuki, and I'm representing the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. And I'd like to get the 15 minutes. San Mateo's draft ODS is designed to streamline in the review and approval process and gives a lot of flexibility to developers. We would like to see more predictability and specifics. We would like to see more predictability and specifics in the draft ODS for the desired results. Developers have the upper hand and can use the density bonus waivers to their advantage and bypass the ODS. The Housing Accountability Act also applies to new single-family homes with an ADU. And new developments that are in the range between 12 and 24 units, the middle housing should be included in these draft ODS. We'd like your support for the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter of August 3, 2023. The Alliance would like to see these elements from the Santa Barbara ODS included in the San Mateo ODS. San Mateo needs goals similar to Santa Barbara. And the goals in the Santa Barbara ODS stress the following: increase predictability and confidence in the process with consistent expectations for desired results. Promote a livable city by supporting diverse housing types. Create a vibrant and walkable community. Respect the context of the existing buildings and natural environment with buildings and design that reflect the city's vision for exemplary architecture. Also, create a visual language to better communicate these local standards with photographs, illustrations, and maps, tables, et cetera. The draft San Mateo ODS does not address architectural building designs. What we'd like to see included is timeless design principles, the building mass into a thirds both vertically and horizontally. Windows with four-inch insetts and windows that are taller than wide and windows that are stacked vertically. Best practices: avoid fast fashion trendy designs, but use quiet designs for quiet, design quiet buildings, not shouting for attention, simple massing, and avoid that wedding cake. We'd like uniform building materials. We like brick. We like stucco, but this evening you've mentioned some drawbacks. We'd like to take cues from existing buildings in the downtown historic district.
Lori, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but Chair Abner, did you want to grant her additional time?
Pardon me?
I requested 15 minutes.
Lori, additional time. Typically, we only do three minutes per public commenter.
I understand that. And normally when we have a 15 presentation, 15-minute presentation, it had been earlier confirmed that that was part of the staff presentation. So I don't know if there was a miscommunication here or if the Heritage had actually asked for a 15-minute presentation.
I just did.
Lori, I'm not trying to shut you down. I'm just trying to figure out why this is occurring and if staff was aware of it.
Through the chair, it is customary to grant additional time if a member of, if a representative from a community organization is speaking, especially if the other members of that organization have either ceded their time or I know that perhaps they're not present tonight, but there is a request from a representative of, of an organization. So it is up to the chair's discretion. Since we have limited attendees tonight, it is not beyond the bounds to, to allow for additional time.
Personally, I am fine with the presentation. What I'm trying to figure out is if it was organized prior to this meeting.
It was not requested prior to the meeting.
Okay. If the rest of the commission is okay with the 15-minute presentation, then we can go forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Urban design considerations. We'd like staff to reexamine the current daylight plane policy since it has become very confusing among developers. We would like to emphasize special corner treatment of the buildings and glass, and avoid the glass corners in contemporary buildings, which creates dead space. An excellent example of corner treatment in the downtown are the Merkel's Building and the Worstoff Restaurant on B Street. In regards to demolition permits, they should be issued at the time of the building permits and not before. They should be substantially complete, completed and draft permits provided to applicants if pre-construction testing is required before the building is issued, building permit is issued. We would like to propose for projects in the downtown and surrounding neighborhoods, a project design review by a qualified consultant, historic preservation consultant, on all projects proposed for compatibility and timeless design principles. The effects would be on the historic context and for evaluation and determine if the new building would have a significant impact on the historic district or on existing buildings. We would like to suggest transition zones between single-family homes to the higher-density housing range. For example, block 20 could have been a transition zone to the homes. There is just too much height difference between residential neighborhoods and a building to 75 feet. Transitional zones could be townhouses and the upper level of new commercial mixed-use developments have decks and setbacks. And we want to make sure that, that there aren't any privacy, shade, and wind issues for adjacent residential neighborhoods. Neighborhood preservation and protection. We would like to see an intent statement be added to the draft ODC for each neighborhood zone. The physical character and the architectural style of each neighborhood should be included. We need to preserve and protect the existing pre-war homes and duplexes in the central and north-central neighborhood for middle and low-income families. And not have these smaller duplexes and, and smaller homes subjected to multifamily The, the neighborhood pre-war styles that we have include Spanish Revival, Tudor Revival, Victorian on the east side of the railroad tracks. So we would hope that the new developments would include these styles. Now, on page 40 and 41, there, we'd like to make some revisions to the draft ODS document. And we do not want to promote more demolition of our smaller craftsmen and pre-war homes and small duplexes on the south side of Fourth Avenue and the neighborhood streets between Fourth and Fifth Avenues from El Dorado to Idaho Street. We'd like to see that correction to reflect only the north side of Fourth Avenue and not all of Fourth Avenue and not include the neighborhood streets in the central neighborhood. We want to preserve and protect that housing stock for medium and low-income families. And also, there are other portions of vision of the gateway, massing and articulation, windows, doors, and entries, and also porches and the buffer between the residence and sidewalk. These policies all should be reflected to the north side of Fourth Avenue and not include the south side, which have a number of craftsmen homes and smaller bungalows. Architectural style. The draft ODS is silent on architectural styles. And we have in San Mateo the 1989 Building Survey, which shows eight architectural styles for the neighborhoods. There's a description for each with illustrations for each, and we would like that added and emphasized in the ODS. Now, the Santa Barbara ODS is by far more detailed and San Mateo may not need that level of detail. But when it comes to details such as architectural treatment, we'd like to see that the specifics for walls, roof, windows, entry doors, porches, stoops, trellises, fences, front yard setbacks, and materials. Window compatibility has really been an issue in neighborhoods. Rids on the top of window areas, emoluments, invited lights, and higher-quality windows. We'd like to discourage large trims around the windows and horizontal fences in traditional residential neighborhoods. Now, the Santa Barbara ODS goes further and explains the differences between Spanish Colonial and Italian-Mediterranean Revival. And it shows the facades of each. And so what we'd like to see is more details and drawings that reflect the exemplary architecture. And you can go back to the 1989 building, building historic report. Demolition. We'd like to avoid demolition and preserve the visible exteriors from the street of the existing craftsmen Spanish, Tudor Revival, and Victorian homes in older neighborhoods. We'd like to preserve the heritage trees unless they must be removed for safety. We'd like to follow the patterns in the neighborhoods. And ADUs should be located in the rear of the property versus in the front of the properties. Duplex and triplexes are not mentioned in the San Mateo ODS. And duplexes and triplexes need different treatment than those buildings that are four, six, 12, or 24-unit properties. This document only looks at three types: low, mid-rise, and high. In the Santa Barbara ODS, there are 10 building types, and the middle housing includes the units between two and 24. There are courtyards, there's six architectural styles, three principal categories of craftsmen, Mediterranean, mid-century modern, depending on the neighborhood character. So open space. We'd like more common open space on the ground floor with more trees and paint and plantings. Some neighborhoods do not have a neighborhood park, such as in the central neighborhood. We'd like to see a play area for children, separate from the adult areas in the common areas. Balconies. We'd also like to see pasillos landscaping to include more street trees along the residential arterials going all the way to the downtown, the collectors, and the local neighborhood streets to reduce the greenhouse gases. In terms of fences, we'd like to see cedar, redwood, or pressure-treated materials, which should be vertical, or stucco walls, same as the finish walls. Now, wind and shadow studies are especially important with many tall new buildings. Pedestrians like to walk on streets with sun versus shade. Interior lighting. Buildings are designed to illuminate at night with timber architecture, and this causes significant impacts to the surrounding residential area. Buildings should be designed to reduce the lighting impacts to nearby residents, and these impacts could be reduced by requiring lighting that turns off automatically with no movement. So in conclusion, San Mateo deserves the best ODS in their many distinct neighborhood zones. Each zone has its own visual and physical character and deserves respect. The new infill designs, we feel need to respect the existing community character using established building designs found in San Mateo. We'd like to encourage new developments to be compatible and harmonious with the building types and architectural styles that are prevalent in San Mateo and avoid designs that stand out and are different from others on the street. We'd like to see you incorporate the above-mentioned components in a revised ODS and consider the city of Santa Barbara as a model for San Mateo. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is via Zoom, David Crabbe. You can go ahead and unmute.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. I'm David Crabbe. I'm representing the Sierra Club tonight. You received a letter from us back on August 4. I hope, I assume you all read it. I just, a lot of things in that letter have been addressed tonight, and I want to thank the staff and the consultants for the work they've done. One thing that's not clear to us is just what is the character of the open space that is there? We expected that the open space requirements would be more defined in the ODS standards so that the kind of features that make an open space successful would be more clear. Maybe in the municipal code that we missed it. Ideas like open space might want to have fixed amenable seating or picnic tables or shade trees or outdoor kitchen equipment or children's play areas, et cetera, et cetera. And it seems very unclear how much green space is considered open space and how much hogscape is allowed. And I'd still like to get a clarification on that. So that's the main thrust we have. We feel that because of the high densities that we are now looking at in our cities, that open space is becoming even more and more critical all the time. Get away from the, the concept of the stack and pack thing where, you know, housing units are, don't have much amenities, they got a little house, housing unit and a big high-rise and that's about it. We want to see access to green spaces and open spaces close to or part of the development. And I, I think you've got that in here, but anyway, it's more to emphasize. The other thing is very minor, and it was addressed actually by your previous speaker, about the lighting. The one thing we have in our letter, which is an extension of what you require, we like the dark sky. And one way to do the dark sky routine, just a second here, I gotta find it in my, is what we call bi-level lighting, which maintains, so the lighting would be facing down, but also maintains the lighting at a very low level unless there's a motion activated, you know, someone coming by and a motion activates so people can see. And that's a beneficial, beneficial, of course, for the dark sky and for protecting animals at night. So we'd like to see maybe that little addition to your lighting comment in section five. But the main thing we're concerned about is we do feel that there's not a real good, clear definition as far as we can see is exactly what open space, public open space and private open space is, what it concerns, how much is green, how much is hogscape, what kind of features make the difference, what we ought to see. So we sure would like to see you look at that closer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Our last speaker is George. George, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yes, hello. I just wanted to say that I concur with the comments that were made by Lori and the comments that were just made by David. I wholeheartedly support the efforts of the San Mateo Historical Alliance to create standards that raise the quality of the infrastructure in San Mateo. My family has friends that moved to Santa Barbara in the 1950s and, oh boy, are they happy they did. They're very proud of their city. They're happy with what's been done there. And I think it's a, it's a laudable goal for us to, we're in a different, we're, honestly, we're in a completely different orbit. We're so far, far, far from what Santa Barbara has accomplished, but it's a laudable goal. And I think we should be targeting, you know, for excellence, not for, I don't know, some the usual standards that seem to be proliferating around San Mateo these days. That's really, that's really my commentary. Oh, I would just like to say that I, I wouldn't call the information that was provided by the consultant where they said they did surveys of, of a couple of groups and there were 20 or 30 in them, including developers. I, I would call that just, you know, input. It's not a survey. I, I think you'd need to do, or maybe somebody else can do true, real surveys that represent a real view of what the public wants. So I, I think that's a misnomer to say that what was done by that consulting group was a survey. It was just, it was just some, some commentary by people that participated in the early rounds of input, that's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Chair Abner, we have no more public commenters.
We'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. Does staff have any responses to any of the public concerns?
Through the chair, I think we would like to address the open space comments that Sierra Club brought up. I know we provided a response as well. We do have codified standards that are in the zoning ordinance that speak to open space and they define different types of open space. But I just want to ask Laura to, to expand on that a little. Thank you.
Yes, so our zoning code for almost every zoning district except for R1 and R3 and R2 has its own open space standards and it defines what that open space should look like and what should be in it. So, so what might be acceptable for, for an E district might not be acceptable for a CBD district. So there are some bumpers in the zoning code of what should be in open So, there are some bumpers in the zoning code of what should be in open space, but to the, I think, to the commenter's comment, staff can take a closer look at what is edified in the 10 zoning districts that have their own open space requirements and see if we can put some objective standards on maybe play structures or whatever, other materials or seating in ODS. So, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I could also address some of the comments that were raised by the San Mateo Heritage Alliance representative. Staff did receive two detailed comment letters from them and are considering some of the standards such as the one-third, the rule of the thirds, as being an objective standard that could be included and also looking at some of the window standards that they suggested as possibly being included in the ODS. We are, we have included standards for transitions. I know that is one of the questions that the Commission will be deliberating on tonight, so that is, of course, something that's critical to the community and to staff. And as far as architectural styles are concerned, I think I did clarify before that those are harder to make objective. However, if the Commission has guidance on that, we'd be happy to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period once again. And before we go on to our deliberations, do any Commissioners have any follow-up questions prior to going to our discussion of the items?
Through the chair, do you mind if we do a bio break before we go into discussion?
Oh, sure.
Okay, that was my only question.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.[714.93]
And to the Commission for any more clarification, clarifying questions, and then we'll go to the discussion points following any question you might have.
Well, I just thought of one question, and that is this issue of neon colors being prohibited. Like, how do we, is there a specific definition of neon color versus just a bright color? How do we define that for a, for an applicant?
I don't think there's a specific definition. I think it's one of those, you know it when you see it type of colors, but.
Through the Chair, I think that is a good question. We'll have to look at how that is defined. I do want to share briefly that, you know, the ODS is a starting point. So if an applicant does want to propose neon colors, it is just, you know, we would look at it from a discretionary design review perspective to see if it, if it matches the architectural style and the community context or not. So while the ODS standards prohibit, could prohibit neon colors if that's the direction the Commission wants to go, there are still pathways to allowing for creativity or certain types of neon colors if the project design calls for it through the discretionary process.
Well, I guess the scenario that I was thinking about was that if we say neon colors are prohibited, and then somebody comes, you know, an applicant comes to us with a project that, well, comes to the planning department with a project that is a brightly-colored building, you know, I'm thinking Capitola, or, you know, I don't know, Secretaria, or Mexico, or lots of places where bright colors are used. And, you know, are we, I guess, does that leave, does, saying that neon colors are prohibited, does that leave the applicant open to having, you know, a color denied because it might border on neon if it can't be defined?
Yeah, go ahead.
That, I think that touches on the broader issues of colors and materials. Right now, in the discretionary process, if we think that something's too bright or incompatible, we have the ability to say, please tone it down, think about changing something else. We don't have that in an ODS. So the larger question is, should we put bumpers on colors and materials? What should they be? Staff thought no neon was a good starting point, but maybe that's wrong. But what is right for San Mateo is kind of what we're trying to hash out.
Through the Chair. This might be actually a good time to point out that the Housing Defense Fund sent in a letter where they outlined four spots in the current draft where they felt like the language was subjective and not objective, and the phrase neon colors was one of them. So I think if we do want to prohibit certain colors, we have to be able to define them in a objective way.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, I was talking to an interior designer about that, like, what is it about that that's, that doesn't seem right? And that's where I was saying that she, this designer that I was talking to suggested that the word be palette, I mean, not be palette, but be hue. So like, if, because palette suggests different colors together within a palette, whereas hue is the same color, and then there might be different shades of it. And how, like, sorry, this is comments, not questions, I guess, but anyway. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you. I did have one or two quick follow-up questions, and one of them is on page 33, the specific plan area standards. And I know, Laura, you and I spoke about this briefly earlier today. And my question was, on the last sentence, where a project is located within, within the sphere of multiple specific plan areas, all specific plan standards shall be followed. Yet if there are different standards that conflict between the separate specific plans, how will you determine which would be followed?
Yes. So this, you, the overlap we see in specific plans is mostly on the El Camino, because you could have El Camino, you can have TOD, you can maybe have something else. So you do have layers of plans. Staff has made an effort to make sure they're not conflicting, but in the revised draft, we'll add some additional language on what to do if that occurs.
Okay. And then one last clarifying question, and I think I understand this, but I just wanted to reiterate it. So if a project that is, is protected by the HAA standards, and they can ask for waivers and concessions to avoid doing the objective standards?
Yes, they have waivers and concessions for a standard. They just have to prove that that standard is cost-saving to the project and to building the units.
Yes, for concessions, that would be the case, where the applicant has to justify that the concession would offset the cost of the affordable housing construction. For waivers, the developer would have to demonstrate that the meeting the standard would physically preclude the project from being constructed as proposed. So it is, there is some review and analysis involved. However, the applicants do, the developers do have that path available to them.
Thank you. I thought that's, that was the, how it would work. So are we ready to go to the five point of, points of discussion?
Through the Chair. Could I start?
We would love that.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up the five points. That will guide me. But I have a couple overarching comments to start with, and then minutia. And I actually think it flows better. If I give you, believe it or not, the overarching, then the minutia, then I will go through these sort of category by category. So thanks again to staff, to consultants. There's a lot, clearly a lot of hard work that's gone into this over many months, and a lot of effort to pull together a lot of complicated things. Just the amount of things you have to coalesce to do all this is, is, it's quite a lot. So I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it. Yet I think that we're not achieving some of our goals, and I will kind of finish on flexibility. That's kind of my concern. And so I, you know, I, I have to say that before I give the rest of my comments, just to qualify them a little bit, that while I think there's a certain way to handle the comments that I'll give you, that works within your framework, I think there's another pathway that is probably not open to us at this point in time, where, where there would be more overall granularity in terms of defining, sort of looking at this by zone, or by building typology, or by neighborhood. I don't think Santa Barbara is the perfect fit for us at all. But it is an example of, of getting more granular. And I think there's, that to me is important in a city that is so diverse. And so I, I would, number one, I would like to see that and first, and then to see it ground-tested, second, and then have that brought forward altogether. That's not where we are. But because I had, we had talked, it was in the staff report, and I'd asked the question about sort of the process for amendments. To me, I'm just viewing this as a document that's not going to be done in December for what it needs to be. I think there's another round of granularity in another, in several of these categories. And so I would say typology, zoning, and open space, where there's an opportunity to, and I think people have touched on it in different ways, sort of, commenters may have said that the ODS that we deserve, or something that supports all the richness and diversity of San Mateo. I feel like what we have instead, and is a bit philosophical, is an approach that's actually quite minimal. And that does work in some ways, but in other ways, it doesn't allow you nuance, because it's just not there in a document that doesn't zoom in further. So I'd like to see that happen next year. I'd like it to, that to be the understanding that there's, and I can't, sorry, I'm not trying to tell anyone to do anything, but if it was me, we would kind of go into another level of detail in 2024, and also do the sort of try-it-out thing that I think staff talked about, and coalesce those things together at the end of 2024 into a document that's, that's going to be much more robust. So that's my general. I have a couple comments that I think would be productive, but don't fall into the categories, just on the Paseo locations. It's the sort of thing that I think in a perfect world, you would zoom in and look at neighborhoods or zones, and talk about how Paseos work best in those neighborhoods, and responds more to the geography, the neighborhood, the facts on the ground in San Mateo. But for me, 600 feet is, a worst-case scenario for a Paseo, 300 feet is like a city block downtown, I think, or, you know, it's, I would, if you have to pick a place and just start there and try it out with Paseos, I would ask you to consider something closer to 300, at least, at least think about it. Maybe there's good reasons not to do that. Mid-rise and high-rise threshold, you tend to see at eight floors, a change in typology. And so you might find over time that you have a bit of a different set of customers almost, that are coming in at that level. So in my mind, it could make sense to align that, that mid-rise at eight floors instead of seven, as you've done. But that's just something to consider. And as I looked at the particular standards relating, and how the standards change, I didn't, I didn't feel like I saw a big difference in what's getting applied in a practical way. But that, I think in the, with developers or anyone who's building a building that size, you know, that's kind of the world they live in because of the typologies and the cost change. Just two more quick things. Ground floor mixed-use requirements, and I could have asked these as clarifying questions, but the, you've got one on four dot, and don't, you have to go to this, just 4.2.1.a., which is saying 75% glass, I think, on the ground floor, which makes sense. I assume you're trying to exclude back-of-house, but if you include back-of-house and sort of, you know, loading dock doors, and the PG&E transformer room and everything, you could technically be asking for nothing but glass on the remaining areas. So there may just be a little nuance there to look at. And then the very next one, 4.2.1.b, this is the interior ceiling height. 15 to me, 15 feet floor-to-floor makes sense to me, but 15 feet floor-to-ceiling, in a retail space on a ground floor, you get three to four feet of guts above that. So you're actually asking someone to do floor-to-floor, like 18 to 19 feet. So I would, if you wanted, and it makes sense to talk about floor-to-ceiling, because that's kind of the design, what people experience, or if you assume someone has sort of a dropped, a dropped ceiling, I would aim closer to 12 for that one, as a minimum. Because if we were to say 15 minimum, and then you go an inch over 15, and now you've, you're double-dipping in FAR or whatever. So that's that one. Okay. I'm now arriving at the massing and articulation section.
So can I interrupt one second?
Yes.
Martin, so I would think that we might want to each comment on the four or five items independently, and then, you know, just circle through?
Yes, thank you for that. In that case, I would just hit massing and articulation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry for jumping in with a preamble there.
We lack preambles here, it's all good.
Thank you. Massing and articulation, I have five comments. And I, I will, I have either already emailed these, or I will. And there's probably a few others that I'm not going to mention, because they're, call it minutia, but just to have it all entered into the record, I'll be sending written comments as well. But I have five that I think, I want the, any public and my fellow commissioners to hear, as they may be worthwhile for discussion. 4.1.1.c.c, you don't have to go to it, I'll tell you. The, this is where you say, if you're going to make a change, an associated color and material change, it needs to be coupled with a minimum offset, sort of forwards and backwards. That, to me, feels like you shouldn't have to do that. And I, and for a number of these things, you know, you can't help but kind of test it against buildings, and just do a quick check. And so I just noted some buildings downtown, even some historic buildings that change color, color or material in the same plane, without doing that, that offset. And it still felt successful to me. So my comment to you is, I don't know that we need to go that far on that particular item. 4.1.2, this is the, the horizontal plane breaks, I think for mid, this is probably for mid, 4.1.2, this, this could be for low-rise, not mid-rise, but it's the one that's the 15 to 30-foot frequency. And I know that time was spent talking about considering, making sure that doesn't mess up the interior floor plan of the building. So that makes sense. But I still feel like if, if we give that, that tight of a rhythm to it, you could end up with these, call it enforced, crenellated facades, to use a word I haven't used since architecture school, where it just keeps going in and out. You can know the joke, yeah. And so to me, I think we could loosen that up a little bit. That's my comment on that one. I appreciate the way it's changed. It's staggered between low to mid to highs. That makes sense. The gradation, and certainly the concept itself makes sense. And one, one more massing, 1.4.1.3.c, this is, I think it says when you push in and out, that relief needs to be two feet deep. And so I know this, this must not be the one we looked at earlier, where it's an 18-inch pushback. Now I understand what that is. There's another place where it says two foot deep to push in and out. And I feel like fundamentally, the point of doing this is to create a shadow relief. And again, I'll just say, I don't know that it has to be two feet to get that done. And I was just walking around, looking at buildings downtown, and, you know, I was seeing a lot of relief along the facade that was maybe more like 18 inches minimum. And you do get 18 inches elsewhere in that articulation, so that makes sense. And not to quibble, quibble over inches, but just trying to ground-truth these things as much as I could. I don't know that it had to go quite, quite that deep. And then I had a couple items on transitions. 4.4.1.a, this one says, step back, I think at the, above the first floor. So you go up one floor, and then the next two stories have to go back by five feet. And through no fault of your own, the photo you have next to that just sort of shows just two stories before you step back. And to me, it illustrated the point that, and this is kind of what you were talking about, the, it's a one-floor home right now, it could be a two-floor home in the future. And so to me, going, letting someone go up two stories and then step back is kind of the same thing as saying, hey, there could be a two-story house here anyway. So I would say step back after, above the second floor, not above the first floor. And the last one is the one right after this, 4.4.1.b.b. This is talking about transitions when you're on a secondary street. And it, to me, that's mentioned for both high-rise and mid-rise, to do, I think, a step back, or some treatment across the street. So to me, for mid-rise, that, that felt like a little bit overkill. There's already a whole street there. For high-rise, I can, I can get it. But to me, I would break that, I'd have that threshold at the high-rise level, not the mid-rise. And so those were my only, I don't, I don't think there's any other transitional elements that I was considering. And I, I thought there was, there's a lot of great work here. I didn't think there was anything that was, like, overlooked. Yeah, that's it for this one, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Okay. Through the Chair. So just to clarify, you know, should I go Martin's route and give, like, just broad, general opening comments, and then go into the?
That's an idea.
Okay, okay. I have a lot of comments, so I'm just gonna, just going to preface that. I want to thank staff and consultants for all the work that you've done. It's been, it's a lot of work, I understand. And it's, this is really important. It's really important to me. I think it's going to be really important to the city of San Mateo in, in creating better harmony, not just from a built form, but just as people living in the city. Right now, as I look at the objective design standards, I don't feel like they give the public or developers a strong idea of what new buildings should look like, or will look like in the future. And I think that that is an unfortunate thing. There are routes for proposing projects that do not comply with the objective design standards, our current process. So I'm not that concerned about being more committal and strong, and directing what buildings will look like in the objective design standards. I mean, that should absolutely be tempered by real-world feasibility, and constructibility, and financeability, and by what style and type of buildings we want to see in San Mateo. I think ultimately, we are, we are getting a lot of pushback as a community over the course of a number of years. And there seems to be a general dissatisfaction with the architectural products that are popping up. And I would say it's an unnecessary dissatisfaction, and it's something that we could correct through objective design standards, so that we are, as the default baseline, creating something that most people can be satisfied with. I see, I saw the workshop feedback, and I actually might have attended one before I was on the Commission. And a lot of it was very primed and channeled, based on predetermined, predetermined staff issues, like reducing massing and stuff like that. And it's not necessarily how it seems like a good way to actually get to what people want to see. And how do you get there? It starts with a process. I've run a design studio, I've taught design at the university level, and I've also led training and tactical operations as a, as an officer in the Army for battalion soldiers. So I understand different types of processes and how to get to accomplishing a goal. And that being said, I've worked with hundreds of clients on hundreds of projects, and managed the work of designers for those projects. And what I've found is, the only way to accomplish successful projects or missions is to follow a process that includes a very strong understanding of what the client wants extremely early in the process, and having very early and often reviews with the leadership who are accountable to the client. Leadership such as planning commissions, city councils, who are, who are accountable. And then gauging success by checking the work against the overall goals of the client. And here, obviously, the clients are the people of San Mateo, the people we're accountable to. And I guess the question you got to look at is, how do you start? Start with an assessment of the existing codes and policies, which you've done. You've looked at the existing codes and policies, and tried to adapt them into these objective design standards. However, what we need to understand is, this is a process where we have the ability to create something new, something better. And we need to answer the question, are our current standards working? Are they producing buildings and places that people generally love? Or are we seeing disappointment by the populace and unnecessary conflicts with what's being created? And I think that we are seeing a lot of disappointment by the populace and unnecessary conflicts. And that's not to say that, oh, what's been built is of poor quality, or, or bad. But I think that I've seen over and over that there's an expectation, and an expressed, very commonly, desire for San Mateo to look in a way that's consistent with kind of the historic downtown, especially in the areas north of 92. And if new construction is generally seen as a net negative, or a vague diminishment of beauty in the quality of our city, our, our current codes are not working. And that's hard, because, you know, as you probably have gauged, staff and fellow commissioners, that I'm a strong booster of, of building more housing. It's universally recognized by economists, and practically anyone else. I also see and fully understand the widespread sentiment that what is getting built is often disappointing, not as beautiful as many of the homes were built long ago. And having studied the psychology of aesthetics at the graduate level, I am 100% not surprised by this disappointment. And the issue is multifaceted, but we do actually have the opportunity to approve the situation through the ODS, and we can probably do this iteratively. You know, as I was watching and going through the, the presentation tonight, there were so many pictures of existing projects being referred to in the design standards. And I would say that almost none of them I would want to have in San Mateo going forward, not by means of mass, not by means of, of, you know, size, but by the style and the look of the buildings. And that's here what we're doing, is we're shaping those designs. It's all, you know, what we're seeing a lot of is, in those pictures are, you know, the kind of, not postmodern, but like contemporary, kind of just bland, boxy stuff that everybody complains about going up. And that's not necessarily what has to be done. And so, you know, looking at this dilemma, you know, what we need to do is, we need to ask, what should this city look like in the future as it grows? And we need to take a step back and determine what kind of places we want to create. We need to ask, what should a block, or a street, or pedestrian route through downtown, like Fourth Avenue, look like? And the best way to answer that is to, from the, from the beginning, is to find existing real-world places that we love. And they could be a city center in some well-loved European city. They could be a new development in South America, or historic street in Kyoto. Example places should have densities similar to the general plan designated densities, or at least be translatable. And then we work backward from those places. Right now, it's just a lot of, of possible pieces or parts that you can Right now, it's just a lotta of possible pieces or parts that you can slap onto, you know, a mass. And that gives me zero confidence that we're going to guide new development. Now, is it going to stamp and check the box that, hey, we have objective design standards now? Yes, but it's going to be a complete waste of our time, because we're not, we're not any better off than not having them, which is super unfortunate. So obviously, not everybody's going to agree on what kind of style or what look they want in the city. But you can hear very clearly what the, over the noise, what generally people appreciate, and it tends to be the traditional design styles. So my impression is that people like the pre-war styles found in and around downtown, namely the Spanish colonial revival, the mission revival styles, the Victorian era styles that, like Monterey colonial, and also craftsmen and arts and crafts style. And then from that information, we could start building objective design standards that make these styles or similar things the path of least resistance for developers. And this design intent then can be coherently expressed through the next step, which is providing compositional information, not just parts, but compositional information. It can go beyond, it should go beyond a list of elements. Now, it's not to say that a list of elements to include isn't important, but that alone isn't going to produce beautiful buildings. It's, you know, who knows what it's going to produce? It's going to produce something. It could be Frankenstein. You know, you hope, you could hope it's not, but we don't need to hope. We have the ability to actually start with something that creates, you know, buildings that we want to see. So, let me see, I've got to get back to my notes. We should be focused just as much on the composition of the elements. And we can do that by looking at, you know, what are other precedents that have been done? I think that in talking to folks around town and hearing what people have expressed over the time that we've been, that I've been on the planning commission, and just seeing what has been expressed by people in general, I think that we could start from like a simple, single style, and then add on it over the years iteratively and test it. I think that that style should be Mediterranean or Spanish revival, Spanish mission revival. And that could be, that style could be perhaps limited to areas that were developed before 1945, even if we wanted to provide additional flexibility for more modern things elsewhere in the city. I would leave that up to the city council if they want to provide input on that. But I do think that we need to start with a means to objectively compose buildings that generally have a pretty traditional composition that reads Mediterranean. Again, it's not because Mediterranean is the one and the only style that's appropriate for San Mateo, but it seems to be the most woven through the fabric of a lot of loved places. And it can, it could, and I'm just thinking in terms of like staff time and ability within the next less than half a year. I do want to see more styles added to that, that are objectively outlined, like craftsmen, things like that, looking at what Santa Barbara has done. But I'm also trying to think realistically, we would probably have to do that in future years, based on what we learn with, you know, one starting point. As we have right now, we have a lot of, you know, things that fit, like a lot of elements that you add in that fit into, like, that could fit into Mediterranean style, but they're not specifically that way. So you don't necessarily get a coherent, you're not going to get coherent buildings necessarily. And it's really, I'm not confident enough based on what we currently have, but I do think that we could get there if we start at one and then work our way to add additional appropriate styles for San Mateo. So again, I do think that there can be stuff to learn from the Santa Barbara ODS, but there are also other places. There are, yeah, I think it is extremely important to tie what additional volume of buildable space will be providing to multifamily and mixed-use zones through the general plan to a very clear articulation of design and style that people like and support. So we're asking the city to change its built form in a lot of areas over the next decade, to two decades. And I think there will be a lot more support for that as a city if it's clear to what, to people, what that's going to look like. And it's clear that it's not going to be necessarily, it's not going to be, it's not going, we're not going to say we can't have modern buildings, but we're going to make it the easiest to build styles that are already found in San Mateo that people have expressed that they like on average. And we can do that through this document. All right, so that being said, I'm going to go into massing and articulation. So this is, massing and articulation is trying to accomplish a couple of different things. Generally, traditional pedestrian-friendly streets from around the world, you see it in Europe, but you see it elsewhere in Asia and in other places, we're talking pre-car, they're filled with buildings that change into another slightly different building along the same street wall every 16 to 22 feet. If you go to the objective design standards on page nine, there's a picture of that. Is it possible to go to the, our draft document, page nine? Yeah, yeah. Sorry. I'm just, I'm just a picture reference that I'm trying to refer to. Just something that's in the packet that I could, I could talk to. All right, well, while you're getting that up. So when a building changes into a slightly different building, so you're, we're talking like townhouse-type width, it amounts to about four- to five-second intervals of new stimuli at walking speed. And so that's key. It's why many of the buildings on B Street are interesting to walk by. All right, so yeah, thank you. So you look at the Paseo examples, and so if you look at that one on the left, and you do see some articulation, but you don't actually see a ton of articulation. What you see is detail and change between what are psychologically distinct buildings. Now, if you go to, you know, another page, let's see, let's go to page 15. Compare that to these pictures. And these pictures have articulation, and they could even say have similar mass, but they are repeated boom, 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 down across the, across the, a street. And it's repetitive, and it loses visual interest. Now, if you were to cut that building at one portion of that and then do something else, it'd be a lot more interesting. And so what we are often trying to do with massing and articulation is create what's on page nine, and what we end up is what's shown here, where it loses a lot of interest. Now, is it better than, you know, 1950s-era international style, just like brr, vvv, you go with the same window, 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 all over? Yeah, it's better than that, but is it, is it what we want to get to? No, this is not, it's not acceptable. And so it's, what's really key is to understand what kind of visual change the human needs at intervals that we experience psychologically and at walking speed. And this happens to actually be important to the buildings regardless of how tall it is. You don't even really notice the height of the building as you're walking down the street, because your eye visual field is mostly horizontal. So these buildings are not distinguished by significant, so if you go back to page nine, the buildings are not distinguished by significant horizontal extrusions caused by what is now stereotypical mass articulation often seen in contemporary architecture. Instead, the distinctions are caused by new patterns of details on each building that make each one architecturally distinct. Windows will be slightly different. I'm sorry, you, did you have a comment? I heard you were talking, staff.
Through the Chair. Yes, thank you for the detailed comments, Commissioner Nugent. Just, you know, as a reminder, we are looking to get through five different questions, and each of the commissioner will be speaking, so just wanted to flag that in the interest of time, I mean, we understand the reasons why you're providing comments, and they're very detailed and very helpful. However, if you would like to focus on the comment itself with a brief reason of why you are supporting that comment, that would be really helpful for staff, so we can really focus on the comments and, you know, get that, get all of, everybody's comments in in a timely manner and not have to continue the item.
Would the Chair like to set a time limit for each? Because it's been 17 minutes since Commissioner Nugent started.
I do not feel comfortable setting a time limit now. I think that we all can recognize the importance of time and get our thoughts out efficiently. But thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So I do have some more to say, but this is actually, the massing and articulation is the point that I have a lot more to say on than anything else. So don't worry, I'm not going to be going into this kind of depth on the rest of, on the rest of the points that we're discussing. And so I have about a half a page worth of notes left on this. So this rhythm that you see in that Paseo picture can increase up to, you know, 50 feet in some newer traditional cities like much of Paris outside of the Latin Quarter, if the detail on the buildings is intricate enough to carry detail. And occasionally, even larger spans of, you know, minor monotony can be acceptable if they're limited in occurrence and contain a variety of uses and shops or significantly high in detail. So if you think about that, what I mean by that, I'm talking about the quad in Stanford. That goes on quite a ways. That's pretty consistent, but there's a lot of detail in there, and it's still enjoyable to walk on. So the point is, is we need to avoid repetitive building language along the course of the block without making the block too eclectic or too boring. And so we could achieve this by dividing up the facade of buildings that are, you know, longer than 50 feet, so that no 16 or 20 or 50-foot, whatever we decide, section repeats the three sections to the left of it, for instance. You know, we could make it, we can figure out what fits that, right? But what I'm trying to get to is a feeling that is variety with that, while also staying in a similar style context that you see in a lot of very successful pedestrian environments, you know, Europe, Caribbean, places like that. And I'm definitely okay with carve-out exceptions to that rule. I think if it's necessary to achieve particularly, particular positive outcomes. But again, it's really about avoiding overly repetitive facades along the length of a block. And we get that so much in contemporary architecture, not just contemporary style architecture, but, but current buildings, you know, the typical, you'd love, you'd remove a block, you put a five over one, and it just, you know, we got a 20-to-50-foot section, and then it gets repeated, and then it gets repeated. That's something that we can regulate, and I think that we should, we should do that. And it's just, you know, something that, that developers have done with single-family housing developments that are successful by, you know, regulating. You can't repeat the same house over and over again. So facade elements should also have strong vertical elements, such as vertically-oriented columns, you know, windows, things like that. I do appreciate some of the information that was provided by the San Mateo Heritage Alliance about the windows, you know, especially with Mediterranean-style houses, or Mediterranean-style buildings, there's, you know, there's a depth to the windows, and just that, those four inches, maybe even three inches, provide shadow. And that's all you really need. You know, you see the trim, the band belt, or the trim that you see in, on page nine in this Paseo, that's distinguishing the base layer of the buildings. You know, that's not, that's not two-feet extrusion. That's just, you know, maybe 10 inches at most with, you know, and that's the kind of articulated detail that you want. But you also see the balconies, and I love the fact that you include balconies as an option. And that can be a good variety thing, and that's a successful option for people to use. But you also don't see those balconies, you know, for 300 feet in the same orientation. You see them at like a 20-to-50-foot section, and then it changes to something else. And now, and this isn't even the greatest example, because it does have some pretty blank facades on some portions of it that we could actually improve upon. But that's, this is kind of why downtown San Mateo is so, is so nice, because we have such nice rhythm. Let's see, go back to the question, so, because I wanted to make sure I talk about step backs to massing and articulation. Okay. So in talking about step backs, I do, I do know that developers have a point, that they are, they can be problematic structurally. And they also, not just separate from what developers have in terms of massing, they remove, they can potentially move a lot of buildable space. And you go to, you know, I, I'm going to use Europe, but there's lots of other pedestrian-friendly places. And, you know, five stories up, no step backs, no step backs on buildings, very comfortable. And, you know, we could avoid that. I think that we should, at the very least, limit step backs just to R1-adjacent projects. And then I think, in order to make them less draconian, and then also start at one floor above the height limit for the adjacent R1, because, you know, we are transitioning. So start at one floor above the height limit of the adjacent R1 parcel. Also, when you have excessive step backs, they look funny, especially at like the lower levels, when it's like between like three stories or lower, you have like a step back at two stories, and then it's, it just, there is no traditional buildings that were really built like that. And it just, it feels off. The overall usage of step backs or layer cakes also could encourage more massive building footprints or larger projects, which take up entire blocks, because developers have to counterbalance the loss of space with building a bigger building and having to buy larger lots, increasing the costs. So I really think we should be careful about step backs and other daylight plane-related issues in terms of massing and articulation. So in other words, just to kind of like summarize massing, I think massing and articulation is important to see what good examples of other, for this. is important to see what good examples of other, for this instance, at this iteration, I would say Mediterranean buildings have done to create good articulation without, you know, having this super extruded, you know, boxy contemporary stuff that most people are kind of like either indifferent to or dislike. So, okay, so that's where I'm going to leave that portion. So thank you again for everybody listening to me. I think this is extremely important, so that's why I'm going into very fine detail.
Thank you, Adam.
Am I up? Okay. Thank you. The way I organized my notes was by section and bullet points, so I think it would actually be useful to be able to reference that on the screen if that's okay, because I did not note what the headings were when I wrote my notes. Did you say same? Okay, good, so you can leave it up for Commissioner Williams, too.
No, because then I switched it up.
Oh, you switched it up already, okay. I will also start with a couple of general comments as well. If I get to my notes. So I think, first of all, again, thank you so much for all of the time and effort that has gone into this already. I also think I participated in one of those early workshops before I was on planning commission, which just goes to show how long this has been in process. And so I know a lot of time and research has gone into this already and I appreciate the amount of effort that has gone into this. I also want to thank the San Mateo Heritage Alliance for the two letters that they submitted. I think particularly their first letter on traditional design elements, I found incredibly helpful in organizing my own thoughts as I went through this packet. And I think a lot of their timeless design principles that they call out are principles that we should consider adopting. I think my high, a couple of high-level thoughts were, I know that we want to give developers a lot of flexibility or applicants a lot of flexibility, but this ends up feeling like a lot of complexity to the point where I cannot envision what the buildings will look like from this sort of mix and match that we are giving people to choose from. And the word that came to mind as I went through this was simplify. And I like the way that the San Mateo Heritage Alliance Design Principles letter just really anchored in on like six simple design principles, and I wonder if that's something we could think about, like how could we simplify this so that people could read these and walk away with a clearer picture of what to expect these design guidelines will produce? And as I was going through this, as I was mentally trying to figure out, okay, if I picked these two from this and this three from this and this other one from this, what would I get? I feel like these standards as they are written are funneling projects toward the, I don't know what to call it, modern, I don't even know if it has a style, I'm looking at the architects, I'm not an architect, but like the post-2000, five over one, overly articulated, overly Lego, I don't know how else to call it, design style. And I think that's even born out of the fact that so many of the reference photos in the document, it feels like 75% of them, 80% of them are that post-year 2000, five over one, design style. It feels like that's what we're going for, even if that's not what our intent is. And so I'm going to echo the comments of the other commissioners where I feel like we should start with pictures of what we want the city to look like and then figure out what are the most simple design principles we could put on paper to get to those buildings. And I think even if these design standards don't change that much, just changing the reference images to pictures of buildings that I think our community wants will go a long way in just the adoption of these design guidelines and reading the document. Because like, right, I know I had a reaction just reading through it and looking at all of these pictures and going, ooh, 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 that's what we're hearing reactions against. Okay, so those are my general comments. Is it possible to get the document up on screen? My notes start at 4.1.1B. Oh, thank you, this is very helpful, thank you. 4.1.1B, the articulation details. Yeah.
Commissioner Patel, if you could use the page number two to start with, that would...
Yes, 11. Thank you. It was about the articulation details. I also had in my notes, every 15 to 30 feet for low-rise buildings feels way too often, and even every 20 to 40 feet for mid-rise buildings feels like too much when you think about like the two-foot depth I think this is requiring. Now, after hearing Commissioner Nugent, I think maybe what I'm reacting to are these reference images where you have these, again, very, I don't know what to call them, Lego, right, like every 30 feet, it's like push in two feet, then we pull back out two feet, and then we push in two feet, and then we pull back out two feet. Looking at the, you know, European-style building in the Paseo image, what is being shown there is actually what I think people want, which is not a lot of push in and pull out and push in and pull out. It's the change in the trim details that gives you that visual interest as you walk by. And so if there is a way to shift these articulation details, instead of being every 30 to 40 feet, we have to go two feet deep, but instead have it be about changing the trim details, I think that would get, it would solve both those problems of people wanting more visual interest and also reacting against the post-2000, five over one, boxy Lego buildings. My next one was 4.1.1B.A., and I think this is a very tactical comment, but if this could be organized where the indentations switch back and forth between letters and numbers, that might be easier to reference, because sometimes I'm like, did I forget a number? Did I forget a letter when I'm going through my notes? So 4.1.1B.A., let me see if I can find that.
It's on screen.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I think this was going back to the, B.A., architectural projections. Oh yeah, the projecting the rooms out, I think, where did I read that? In my notes I have projecting rooms. E, thank you, it wasn't A, it was E. That, I'm again trying to visualize what that means, and I'm imagining like little room-shaped warts on the facade of a building. And, and yeah, so I don't know, that one gave me a little bit of pause. 4.1.3A, that's 12, corner treatments. Okay, so I won't make you switch back and forth, but corners come up a lot, I think, when we're in study sessions. And I read through this, and one, I had to Google all these terms because I'm not an architect and I haven't seen these in my own work recently. I was like, what's a couple of, what's a coin treatment? I wasn't sure. Long story short, do we need corner treatments? There's actually a reference photo in the deck, and I won't make you switch back and forth, but there's a high-rise building on a corner with no treatment, and I thought it looked great, it was a nice building. And so, again, I wonder if we're being too overly prescriptive. And some of these things I think feel, I don't want to, I don't know if out of date is the right term, but spires and tower elements are not things that I feel like we see a lot of, or coupleas are not things we see a lot of downtown. And this is again where I worry about the mix and match, like someone picks a spire plus something that doesn't fit in with spires plus something else, what do you end up I think I had a similar comment as Commissioner Wiggins, which is, three sections for a six-to-seven story building feels like too much. And this is where I wonder if you anchor your mid-rise and your high-rise against composition, construction, construction standards, like usually eight stories is where you shift to steel, and so it feels like maybe you want something that's for eight stories or less and something else that's for more than eight stories, and then when you get to more than eight stories, that's where the three sections might feel a little bit better. And I think I also did something similar to Commissioner Wiggins, which is, as I was going through this, is I started asking myself, what are those much beloved buildings in San Mateo and would they pass this test? So the first one that came to mind was like Ben Franklin Hotel. Does Ben Franklin Hotel have three sections or two? I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's two. What about Casa Baywood? And does Casa Baywood articulate its facade every 30 feet? I don't think it does. So, that's another thing. I think it goes back to like starting with pictures of reference buildings that we like and then measuring these standards against it and saying, would these much beloved older buildings in our community be able to be built against these standards? 4.1.3C and D. I think I missed a letter, a number in here. It's where the horizontal and vertical, oh, it is, yes, thank you, page 13. I said, both horizontal and vertical wallplane breaks feel very prescriptive. I don't know how you could satisfy both of these criteria and not end up with a building that looks like the one on page 14. Yes, so if you look at the reference image on page 14, I don't like that building. Like, it, you know, you've got the like, go in three feet, come out three feet, you've got 18-inch sections that feel glued on to, you know, it feels like a building ate another building that ate another building. I think we've talked about that before. And, and so I worry that this, like both horizontal and vertical wallplane breaks will prescribe something that looks like this. And, and I think that was actually another general comment I had, is it would be great if in the final draft we had illustrations that were examples of like, here's what happened if you were to pick these three items from this, you'd end up with a building that looks like this, just so like we could get a sense of what these design guidelines would lead to in real life. 4.1.3D, that's the next one. Yeah. A minimum of 10-foot step back immediately above the building base or for the top of the floor. So there were a few points where we had step backs. There was the one where it was, there was one where it was like you can go back 10 feet every story or you can go back 40 feet. There's this one. I think my overall, if I had, rather than going through these one by one, my overall step back comment is, again, it feels too prescriptive and, and I'm not sure that some of these are real choices. Like, I don't know that a developer would ever pick stepping back 10 feet every story because that feels like so impactful to the floor plate. And so if no one would ever pick it, does it really become a choice? It's somewhere in my notes, I don't remember where, there's one where it gives you the option like, or step back 40 feet. And I worry, like a lot of our sites on our site inventory for the housing element are these smaller sites. I can't remember the exact number, it's like 20, maybe 30, that are less than half an acre. And I worry that, again, a 40-foot step back so you don't have to do the wedding cake is not a real choice because it could eat up half of your lot. And so, kind of like the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter said, you know, no wedding cake buildings, I again feel like we should be minimizing the step backs, we should instead be articulating details of visual interest that people enjoy, with the exception of, I think this was you, Commissioner Nugent, when adjacent to R1 zones. I think when we're adjacent to R1 zones, that makes sense, but again, should be, the step back should come at not the building that is theirs height, but at the height of that zone because things can always change. What was the next one? Oh wait, I think I already did that. Is there corners also in A? Because I had 4.3.1A, I also had corner treatments. Or did I mess those up? Corners in two spots. Oh, it's mid-rise versus low-rise, maybe.
Sorry, what section?
Page 12 and page 16 both mention corners and the same thing, and I'm trying to figure out what the difference is between those.
It might just be an editing error.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think, I actually think it might be a repeat.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Okay, great.
Non-draft document.
And you can...
Remove the error.
I didn't even notice, I wrote about them twice in different ways. 4.1.4C and D. Yeah, again, I felt like these might be too prescriptive, especially requiring three vertical breaks, and this is where I look at like the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter, which talked about the rule of thirds, and I just wondered if there was a simpler way to do this. I also think the word vertical may be missing from the title of D. This isn't massing, but I'm not sure where else this goes. 4.2.2, entries to ground floor units, I think we decided is what that is, must be 18 to 42 inches above the grade of the public sidewalk. Why? Like, isn't that going to make things harder from an ADA standpoint?
They showed an example of that.
Oh. In here?
You provided an example of that.
We had an example of that in the PowerPoint presentation. The interesting thing about ADA, and we have a lot of discussion about that, it is not required to make the units ADA accessible.
Unless they're publicly funded.
At that ground floor level. And so, the whole reason for doing that is to create some separation from that entrance from the sidewalk, and if you were to look at something that relates directly to the sidewalk, it doesn't create a sense of space and closure and privacy for that residential unit. And so that's why the requirement was to have some type of elevation above the sidewalk.
Yeah, I didn't understand that either when I read it, but then when you showed me the photo in your presentation.
I somehow just missed that, I must have been typing. Okay, what I was worried about was the need for ADA ramps and then having like a facade that was just like a series of ramps, and I didn't think that would look very nice. But now I'm also worried about from like an accessibility standpoint, what it means to not have our ground floor units be available or useful for people who are not able to climb upstairs.
Through the chair, I think Laura addressed that, that not all units have to be accessible, and my understanding would be that for multifamily development, you know, as long as there are certain percentage of units that are accessible, that that would meet the intent of that requirement.
Sure, I guess I'm just talking from like an equity of experience standpoint, like if we're making all of the non-accessible units, like they don't get the benefit of being on the street with a street view, or if they're all like in the back or something, like that seems like it would be not great.
Through the chair. So, one issue is this may not be, this may not consider, you know, all potential developments. You know, it's unlikely that we're going to have a lot of one-story developments, but if we happen to do have one-story development of something, maybe it's like a cottage court, then we can't do ADA accessible units without a ramp. And so, I'm not sure we want to have this be a requirement. I don't think we should disallow it, but I'm, I am a little concerned that it could limit certain categories that we may not think about. I think it is nice in, from an experience standpoint, like I agree, like having stairs above. above, but you know, in that scenario where we have a cottage court that's, use ADA unit that's all on one floor, generally, it's good to have ADA units on one floor so they don't have to, they're not stuck in an elevator for everything, so.
Through the chair, if I can also point out that this standard is not referencing like only having stairs. I think there is a possibility to have a ramp if it's 18 inches or 42 inches. It'll just have to, you know, it's on a case by case basis.
Got it.
You would have to look at the design of the ramp to ensure that it is still consistent with the, with the building design. So I think it doesn't preclude the possibility of
Got it.
Having ADA accessible units.
Okay, next one was 4.3.2, which is differentiation between residential and commercial uses. This is another one where I thought, is this necessary? Would a post-war building meet this criteria? You know, in those older buildings that people seem to love, you've got your residential units on the second story, you've got your commercial units on the ground floor and, you know, there's not a two-foot depth change. There is not a change necessarily in building material or color. So I worry again, this might be too prescriptive and not actually what we want. It might create, again, an overly articulated facade. The next one was 4.1.1. B, which is again with the 10 feet step back every story or 40 feet step back overall, it just feels really excessive. And we've heard multiple times about, we don't want the wedding cake buildings. And again, I note that many of the reference images in the design guidelines are the wedding cake buildings, like page 19. And I don't actually think we want that. 4.5.1 roof variation. Again, I think it would help so much if, you know, we had, well, we did have a reference image for roof variation, but this is another one of ones where I said, is this necessary? Like, is it bad if the roof height is uniform for a whole building? I mean, there is Spanish-style homes that have a flat roof, right? I don't know that we need to force variations in roof height. Going back to the five questions, hold on. Okay, I'm going to keep going because I think these things don't go into the next categories. So in my own notes, the next one was 5.1.1. A point D. And 5.1.2, it's both of those together. So let's do actually 5.1.2 because I think that's the more, that's the more meatier one, maybe. You're already there. This is super interesting. I know that we get a lot of comments about shadows and not wanting to cast shadows on open space, not wanting to cast shadows on adjacent buildings. But if you do research on this and if you actually go see how spaces, public spaces are used, people do not sit in the direct sunlight. If you go to Central Park and you look at where people are sitting, they are sitting under the trees, they're, every bench that is in the direct sun is empty when you go to the park. All the ones that are in the shade are the ones that get snapped up first. When, you know, I'm outside in my yard playing with my kids, we, my kids will go play in the shadow cast by the two-story ADU next door because it is hot in the direct sun and it's only going to get hotter. And I actually think we should be doing the opposite of this guideline. I think we should be requiring 50% of the open space to be shaded. And that's the, that's the other one. The other one I said was related, 5.1.1.8. D, which is just above, requires fixed seating elements with shade structures. So it's like, we want 50% to be, not have any shade on it, but we also want to have shade structures. There's something here about these that feel competing. And I actually think the right answer is people want protection from the direct sunlight. Other example, if you go downtown on B Street, Kajakhen keeps trying to get people to wait in the really long line in the street and they keep failing. And there is like 10 pieces of paper taped to the building wall that's like, please do not stand against the building wall and block the doors, please wait in the street. But what people are doing is standing in the two-foot shadow cast by the building. And they don't want to stand in the direct sunlight. And I don't know why they won't put umbrellas out. But I think people want shade, even though they worry about shadows. I think we should make the open space usable. And for the open space to be usable, there needs to be protection from direct sun. Okay. I think that's all of it for me for things that feel like they fall into massing. Thank you.
Are you going to talk about all the points or?
No, we were going step by step.
We are?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I, okay, well, that threw me off. I was, thought the others were doing more. Okay. So could I put the questions back up anyway? Just because, well, I guess I don't really need to. It's okay. I just, I was just wondering what the specific, a couple of them had specific questions. All right, thanks. I just wanted to be sure there wasn't anything, I don't know. Some of them have specific things that, yeah, this was confusing because I did things differently, but now I'm going to try to go through it in this manner. Let's see, I do want to make a couple overarching comments since everyone else did. I did look at this question of like the purpose of these, of this, the ODC. And, you know, one of the purposes is to streamline, I kind of touched on that with the earlier item on the agenda. And, you know, I think as we've gone through this, I sort of wonder like, is this really going to streamline anything? Is it making it any easier for the applicant? And I did even, as I said earlier, I made sort of a list of like, what are all the things that have to be done in terms of like, at least from the design team's perspective, the architects and engineers and the applicant and, you know, and I made this whole list for myself, just thinking of like all the components that you have to, you know, take into account to design a building and a big project and, you know, from occupant load to fire rating and fire exiting and energy codes and, and not to even, you know, not to mention the programming and the, you know, discussions with the, you know, the users and the owner and the neighbors. And I mean, there's just so many steps. And really, it's not the city planning department that is, you know, stretching out the process. It's, it's all these other things that have to be done to get a project to the point of pulling a building permit and starting. And I mean, including what we talked about with Block 21, like they've got to take soil samples, which they can't take when the buildings are in place, the existing old buildings that are going to be removed, you know? And they need to start with a geotech report before the structural engineer can do anything. And they can't really design the building without knowing what the structural system is going to be like. So, so there's so many steps involved and we're trying to streamline it. And I don't know that the, personally, I'm not sure that this really makes it any easier or faster or quicker for the applicant, certainly not for the planning department. So it's a huge effort and I appreciate the effort that's been put into it. And I appreciate the applications. I just want to acknowledge that. So anyway, that was one piece of the puzzle that was, you know, talked about in the beginning about what is the, you know, kind of what is the purpose, where did this sort of come from? The other thing I thought was interesting that was listed, I forget what, on one of the early pages, is about the purpose to fit into the neighborhood, which is what we're talking about with massing and articulation and a lot of these things. And then pedestrians were listed, pedestrian access and pedestrian use. I thought that was kind of interesting. I mean, it's certainly important. It's a big, important goal that we want to achieve in the city. But I thought that was interesting as it was like one of the specific guidelines. So, I mean, specific purposes of this. I don't know. I'm not sure that it's like, I guess I'm, I think it's an important goal. I don't know that it's an important, to list it as the purpose of the, as one of the purposes of the ODC. I think streamlining is probably the most important one and that's the, we're trying to get more housing built in the state and, you know, this is kind of one of the tools, I guess, to get us there. But it's a challenge. So in terms of massing, I'm going to try not to skip around too much, but I might be a little bit all over here. So one of the, one of the items that I struggled with a little bit, and these, I might be repeating things other people have said, but the references, maybe because it was referenced twice, but this idea of the corner needing a tower or some element, I think there's a lot of successful buildings, modern and historical, that don't necessarily have a, you know, sort of specific design element there. So at the corner of the building, I think it could be done with the right detailing, with, I mean, maybe it could be done with articulation, but not necessarily with an element like a tower or some of the other things that were listed there. So just to require people to pick one or more of those at the corner seemed unnecessary. Okay, so then, I guess I do have to go do what you did, which was to go back to the, I was thinking, what is going on here? Okay, so 4.1.3 point B, point B, and these might be repeating things we've just talked about. The body of the building, I do agree with, well, and I should start by saying that I really appreciated all the work and the time and the research that San Mateo Heritage Alliance put into their letter. And it was very useful and we all appreciate, you know, I think we all recognize the value in many of those things. One of the things was the sort of the three-part, three parts of a building. I agree with that. I think that's a, you know, important design element. But in one of, in that section, it said that the body minimum, should be a minimum of three floors. I don't know, is that the right number? I guess I wasn't sure if that was the right number. It seemed like it might be achieved with two floors or, trying to see what that one was. And that was for four or five stories in height? I guess I'm not sure of what, how high, like how, okay, wait. What's not clear to me is, is the body to be three floors in height even for a mid-rise building? And so that I think could be clarified. Okay, I'm going to just keep going because that one. I didn't, could you go to 4.4? I'm not sure what some of my comments were without seeing it. 4.4, sorry. I'm sorry, I might be jumping, hopefully not jumping around too much. I guess I just have a general note that I think that the transitions actually in this do work. So I think they're generally working. I don't have too many specific comments on that. 4.5.1, actually, as I was reading my notes, you said, I have written the same exact comment. Do we need roof variation? I think is what you asked. I had written it the same way. Some buildings have a similar roof all along, you know, one side or all along more sides. So I'm not sure that that is necessary, 4.5.1, to require that much roof variation. I mean, the frustrating thing is I know sometimes we have guidelines and guidelines to me seem helpful, but we're trying to get away from guidelines and have, you know, specific requirements. So I feel like that falls into like, maybe it should just be a guideline, but some buildings don't need roof variation. We have lots of examples of that. 4.5.2 is similar, a building, should a building have two different roof forms? Buildings should have two different roof forms maximum. Seems like a large project might have more than that. So it's sort of contradictory. One says we need to have, you know, roof variation and then this one says should have two roof forms maximum. But if it's a really big project, a big project's going to have more than two roof forms. There might be, there might be multiple things going on. So, I mean, this was very helpful, this, these two images to see what you were looking, what we were talking about here. And the one on the right does show that like, well, even though there's a lot of roof articulation, there's really not more than two types. But I kind of struggled with that roof requiring that much variation and then limiting it to only two on other buildings. Could we look at, oh, wait, let me just see if I missed anything up here. I guess then, could we look at 4.8? I don't remember what that said. Okay, so my only comment here was that, yeah, I do think that adding on to existing structures, this, I just, I think there's a lot more that needs to be articulated here or spelled out here a little bit. And to me, maybe this is not objective and it's more subjective, but adding on to an existing building should, oh, in fact, I think I noted this specifically because it was referenced in the letter from CalHDF. And I think they, let's see, they were saying additions to compatibility within a style is not an objective standard as it cannot be applied uniformly. Well, I, that made me start thinking about it and I feel like, in the end, adding on to an existing building should look intentional. And maybe this is my architect speak coming out, but, but, you know, it, we want it to look intentional and not just like an add-on with no care or attention to what the existing building was. Whether it match it exactly or be, you know, compatible in some manner, that's what, that's what the difficult part of the design is. But I think that there needs to be a little bit of thought to how, like I'm not sure if it's just adding, you know, incorporating those items or, I almost feel like there has to be some subjective wording here, rather than specifically saying be the same architectural style as existing building. It has to be compatible and I don't, I don't know that it has to be exactly the same architectural style. We've kind of talked about that a couple of times on different projects, but I'm sorry, I don't have any more, better way to resolve that, but that's something I think that needs to be hashed out a little bit. Okay, so then moving on from there, oops, hold on, where else am I? That was 4.8. All of this is color. Okay, and then I had a couple ones that I wasn't too sure about, so, oh, actually, I just made a note while you were speaking. Commissioner Patel was talking about the shadow requirements. I do feel that having a limit on the shadow, on shadows is important. The limits that are described there are, you know, only from 12 to 2. And if, that means that, let's say you've got a, you know, mid-rise building, I can picture one in my head that we've had before us that I objected to what the open space was going to be like down at the ground level. Like if you are saying that, if we're saying that we want to get some sunlight on 50% of the, you know, space at ground level and you've got, you know, multiple stories around that space, that means that the, if we don't require any sun in that ground level space, we're going to have very limited sunlight ever coming into any of the units in the building. I mean, it's just a way of getting some I mean, it, it's just a way of getting some sunlight into the units and some sunlight on, you know, that was only from 12 to 2 at spring and fall. Of course, summertime, I guess, is a lot more than that. Yeah, I am hesitant to give that up. I feel like, yeah, shade's important, but that, that's also affecting all the windows in the units and how much, you know, daylight. And to me, I guess it goes hand in hand with this idea of, you know, we try to, we're trying to look at, you know, whether it's a lead building or just a, you know, a green building, we want to look at, you know, are there ways to use daylight instead of, you know, electrical lighting? And so, that sort of goes hand in hand to me. All right, moving on to the next one, I guess, was 7.6, 0.1. And I didn't really understand this one. I should have asked about it in the clarifying questions. It says that the setbacks of the train platform should, for a building, should only be 10 feet. And I guess I'm, I was struggling to understand that, and I probably should have asked earlier, but it just seems a little narrow. I mean, obviously, there's the platform, and then there's a setback to the building. So, buildings, the platform should include a 10-foot rear. It just seems pretty narrow. So, I would suggest that should be something more, like 20 feet. And the last item that I think is, I think it's the last item. No, maybe not. 7.7, 0.1, I don't know, for some reason, I said, yes, I agree with this. So, maybe we could take a look at that. Oh, it's the Mariners Island area. Yeah, so, again, I'm thinking of a building that we have seen before us, and it says here that the height limit, maximum two-story height limit within 100 feet of the main lagoon channel or any residential construction. So, that, I would like to look into that a little bit more generally. I mean, that's, we've seen a couple of buildings along the main lagoon channel that are, we saw one in particular that was quite tall, and I think that limiting it along there makes sense for a number of reasons. But two-story does actually seem quite limited, but I do agree that a maximum along there makes sense. I mean, we saw, we saw one building, a proposed building, I think it was at the Fisherman, Fish Market Building, Fish Market location, that's like, I don't know, seven stories high or something. And I just felt like that's pretty massive next to the water where people are kayaking and.
Through the chair, if I could clarify that this particular, specific plan area is very limited, it's, I don't think it extends all the way to the fish market side, even though that is along the waterfront, but that's Seale Slough, so this is a very focused specific plan area that doesn't extend all the way there.
Yeah, that's what I was realizing, so, okay. I am looking at the time too and realizing we're only on the first one. Let me just see if there's anything else. A couple of things, I agree that the 15-foot ceiling for the first floor, that it should be 15-foot floor to floor. And I also agreed that the protrusions that are two-foot, required to be two-foot extensions, that seemed excessive to me too. I thought the 18 inches in other areas seemed more appropriate. So, that's it. Thanks.
Through the chair, can I respond to something Commissioner Williams said? So, I'm going to go back to the shade thing, and you said something that I think was really helpful, which is, I think the desire for sunlight in open space is a proxy for the desire for sunlight in their windows, right? People, people want light in their units. They don't want their homes to feel dark.
Right.
And, and the easiest way to express that is to maybe say like, this building can't cast a shadow on another building or on a park. But I think when it comes to open space, when it comes to park space and how people use park space, they do want shade. And so, maybe this is about being more detailed or more clear to, to really articulate that this is about making sure that residential units are well-lit, and it's, and maybe not about actually the open space having direct sunlight.
Yeah, thank you.
Through the chair, can I just, so, I think flexibility in that is probably preferable. So, we, in these draft, in this draft document, you can have, say, a dog run be part of the usable open space, which often people will use in apartment building and really appreciate, but you don't necessarily need that to be super sunny for it to be usable, you know, just having a little bit more flexibility. I think having that criteria is going to push a lot of the outdoor open space to the, to the top, to the, so I don't know if that's actually going to affect, you know, the lighting in the building, the amount of light that's going to go in the building.
I see your point.
Can we go back to the questions, please? And most of my comments have been caught by the rest of the commission. Couple of my overarching concerns are, I believe that we're putting the standards together based on requirements from the state, which is a good incentive. And I think along the lines of Commissioner Nugent, we could have a fresh start here and really have an incredible document that would give us a city that would be, just be spectacular. So, I'm hoping that this is the starting point for this process, and we can acknowledge and facilitate the best possible outcomes that we are afforded. To me, it's a little sad that we're working under certain constraints. Five years ago, when this was first brought to the commission, my eyes kind of glazed over because I realized how important it was, but also how difficult it would be. And I think that it is a difficult process. And I'm not saying that we're not making progress, but yet, we haven't had that full five years to work on this, and I think that shows. And I think this document can have the ability to continue to have a gorgeous city and even better it. As the commissioners were speaking, I flashed back to Amsterdam when I was there four or five years ago, and I had a picture of a plaza that was built in the 1600s, and there's 180 feet of building that is all the same height, all on the same plane, all with windows, but it's five different buildings, and it's gorgeous. And I think we have the opportunities now to do similar things. I've always, I've never understood why hundreds of years ago, they could build extremely gorgeous building with very little mechanism at all and no automated tools, and we say we can't do it now when we have all the abilities to be able to produce just as gorgeous of buildings at considerably more efficient ways. And I think we, I think we have to realize we have the opportunities here, and this document could be transformational for the city of San Mateo. With that, I will quickly go through the massing and articulation. My biggest, not my biggest concern with the massing and the articulation is that, the reason for this document is so that we can streamline our housing process and build as much as we possibly can to meet our regional housing needs analysis. And that, I think, has to be an overriding factor in what we are trying, in what, in what guidelines we are giving. I don't like the step backs. I don't like having limited space where we are restricting the, the overall use of properties. The city of San Mateo knows we have limited resources when it comes to land, and not to maximize that use is a waste of resources. Specifically, we've talked about step backs, which I have, I have trouble with. Getting roof lines down to meet a one or two-story building when you have the opportunity to go five or six stories, doesn't make any sense to me, although I think that's an option to, to meet, you know, the neighborhood. I think specifically along the Al Comune Real, we shouldn't have any restrictions in height as it pertains to the existing buildings because we're not building to replicate two, one- and two-story buildings, we're building for the future. And I think we need to keep that in focus. I like Mr. Adams' presentation on the importance of articulation in buildings, how to break up long lengths of buildings. Of course, we're all used to walking blanks, blocks where all you have is the same storefronts, the same office complex, and it isn't all that pleasing to the eye, and it's not engaging. The matter of residential units needing to be, I think, 18 inches to 48 inches or 46 inches, I don't, I don't like them because, for a variety of reasons, but not the least being, as our population is aging, any step becomes difficult. Stairs are a hindrance to occupying their, their housing units. And I, and I think we need to keep in mind that our population is aging, and we need to make, make our structures more appropriate for them to use. Transitions from R1 and R2s, I struggle with that. I don't want a 20-story building next to my house. I don't think it's appropriate. But where they do interact, I think we have to be very cognizant that it's going to be disruptive to the neighborhood, and we need to make it as malleable as we can. I think on the, on the massing in the buildings, that's all I had to say.
Through the chair, would it be okay if we had just a quick follow-up discussion? If people wanted to comment on other things that, like, between these, so we stay on this subject, but just maybe, like, I have, I have a couple of things that I want to say in reference to what other commissioners have said. Most of it's like, yeah, I second that, but I just, would that be okay if we did that quickly?
Well, sure, if we can do it quickly, sure.
Okay.
Through the chair, could I just make a comment about the remaining time? So, I, I'm fine with that, but then I was wondering if we, if we could answer 2, 3, 4, and 5, like, as a group, because I think I can do that. Okay.
So, what, so it's almost 10 o'clock, and we will run into the 11 o'clock in a short amount of time, and we will have to make a decision if we would want to continue discussion on or further on after that. So, I think we need to be cognizant of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. So, I just wanted to comment on corner treatments because I hadn't commented on it before, and I, and I think I would, I'm in agreement with, with the commissioners that commented on it, and I would say make them allowed, but not required, is what I would say for most of the corner treatments that are provided. I think they could, like, a corner tower or something could be nice, but I, and I don't want to make it unavailable for developers to do, but I don't know if it's, like, necessary, as you said. And then the other thing, Commissioner Williams had mentioned about the top, middle, or body and base, must the, the body be three floors? And I agree, it does not, to me, like, two floors would work, and there's actually a picture from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance in one of their letters that shows that very thing happening quite successfully. So, I would say three floors is not, should not be required. And then roof form variation, I also agree with both of your comments on that. And then the shadow requirements, I think that, I think flexibility is probably better in my book. And then the 18 to 40 inch, 42-inch steps, I agree that, that having more accessibility, like aesthetically, I like it, I like how it, how it looks, but having it be more accessible is probably, probably more important to me.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I was going to say lightning, lightning round. I'll still try to make it a lightning round, but I will run down the rest of these, and I, thanks to everyone for letting the, the mass in and articulation one breathe, I think there's a lot there. For me, there's not as much on the remaining ones. Colors and materials, I, I was generally kind of okay under the, the rubric of, we're going to try this and, and see how it, it works. The, you know, maximum of six, okay. I don't, again, I don't know about applying things citywide, but as a starting point, I was fine with that. And I think I had misunderstood, I was thinking it was three, three colors minimum, but no, you were talking about three shades, and what it really is is a combination of colors and materials, three and one, two and two. I'm okay with that as a starting place. We got, I don't know if we got a, a reference in the, in the letter about things being, you know, subjective and not enforceable. I can't remember if they mentioned color, but it made me realize that we, with colors, I think it's possible to be fairly objective, right down to the RAL codes or whatever, which is what Santa Barbara did and what, what people do specify color. I think we can be objective about colors, so we probably need to do that, but small comment. And my only other material comment was on vinyl. I, you know, don't love vinyl as much as the next person. I have in the back of my mind a worry about prohibiting more affordable building materials and what it can do to the overall cost, cost of housing. So, I make a general comment about trying to balance those. In my opinion, prohibiting vinyl goes too far and is a little bit out of balance. I definitely understand what you're doing, trying to take input from, you know, concerns about maintenance, but to me, vinyl doesn't, to my understanding, vinyl doesn't fall into that in terms of like a longevity standpoint, perhaps maybe it's the opposite, lasts too long. So, that's my only other colors and materials comment. Moving around along downtown, it, this stuck, struck me that with the downtown, the retail core guidelines compared to some of the other specific plans, I felt like there's a lot of detail in this document already. It was clear, you know, it's, there's a lot of thought to me that went into that, and so you had a pretty good starting point. And if anything, I wondered if you could go a bit further with the downtown. There's just a lot of, to me, a clear intent coming through with what they were trying to achieve, and I, everything I saw made sense, and I, maybe you could go for even more, you know, pull out more of what was there and try to make it objective. That was it for downtown. Open space, I may have touched on this broadly, but to me, I can't, I have a hard time imagining open space, sort of come up with a list of rules and just applying them across the whole city. But for, you know, as a starting point, we've talked about the, maybe the, I don't, we actually haven't talked about this one yet, the 50% hardscape. I, a lot of this is going to be overstructures, it's all technically hardscape anyway, it's just with planters on top of it. To me, 50% as a, I think it was, it was a maximum, and for references, 5.1, 0.1, 0.8, 0.8, no need to go to it. I agree, I don't want all 100% hardscape, but that's probably wrong in almost every case, but as a maximum, or a, I think what I'm trying to say is, I think you can go with like, as low as 25% softscape, or you could let hardscape go up to 75% as a starting point in this sort of, we're going to try it out world. 5.1, 0.1, 0. B, 0. B, this was talking about treatments along ground floor residential frontages and what other, what other, I think it's a, it's a kit of parts of what other things could you use? And the one that seemed missing to me was planter walls, which may not be the same material, it may be a product that you dropped in, but seemed like one, another thing to consider adding. 5.1, 0.1, 0. C, 0. C. one, point C, point C, sorry, I'm trying not to speak too fast. This is about, um, dog runs and community gardens counting for more than fifty units, and I'm remembering the twenty-seven unit building they used to live in, and we would have totally benefited from those things, so, uh, maybe considered, like, a lower threshold. Uh, that's my anecdotal observation. And the, this is where I touched on the shadow requirement, but I went back and forth the same way everyone else is, I don't have anything to add. So, I'm not saying anything else in there. Um, and that brings me to flexibility, um, is kind of bringing to a point what I was saying in the beginning. I don't think we're set up for flexibility, I feel like we're set up for, for inflexibility because we haven't zoomed in enough to the different conditions in the city. Um, so, I'm not gonna repeat that one too much. Um, my sense for what to do in the flexibility front is consider editing this down. Um, which of these do we really need right now? And I can appreciate that the more you add, the more you can test out, but in my mind, I'm starting to, like, me, move towards, like, a less is more approach, um, and maybe there's more time to, to workshop these things and add more of them in later. Um, and I don't know, I don't think I've touched on explicitly the San Mateo Heritage Alliance's letters, but, um, it was very helpful. Thank you for all the time and thought that went into that. Um, the, the Santa Barbara example kind of got me, me thinking about how flexibility can work, so that was very helpful for me. Um, yeah, and I feel like we should come back next year and, and just keep on taking this to the next level, and those are all my other comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just typing a single note based on something Commissioner Wiggins said. Um, okay. So, I'm gonna talk first, colors and materials, really quickly. I do think that it is a little too constraining. I think that three different colors and materials combined is an appropriate baseline. Um, I just worry, I, I like sometimes simple palettes, um, and I think three is probably the minimum, but I'd be curious to hear what the other commissioners would say to that. And then, in terms of vinyl, um, I do think we should allow vinyl windows. Um, I think that not allowing vinyl windows, um, is, it just, it increases cost, um, and you can actually have some pretty nice-looking vinyl windows, uh, these days. I'm also curious to hear what the rest of the commission says. Um, and I'd be open to changing my mind. Um, and then, to go into downtown, so, I do appreciate, uh, the letters that the San Mateo Heritage Alliance provided. I, I don't know if this is the, the category to, to look at it, but I, I would like to see the rule of thirds and the top, middle, base, um, kind of integrated into the things that are involved in the downtown area, um, as, as a way to objectively kind of guide some of the overall information that's in there. Um, and then, you know, looking at potentially vertically-aligned windows on, like, seventy-five percent of the facade, or some, some appropriate percentage, um, and then also the window shape information that was provided in the letter, I like. Um, otherwise, I think downtown, and I'm gonna talk more about this in flexi, yeah, on the flexibility number, but it's gonna relate to downtown, so I'll, I'll relate back to downtown, uh, in a little bit. All right, open space requirements. So, I really appreciate the use of roof, rooftop gardens as a means of making good usable space out of what is often wasted space. Um, and so, you know, if it's not solar panels, it should be roof gardens, you know, wherever it's feasible. Um, and then, you know, a reminder, uh, so, let me see. I also like, uh, including small gardens between sidewalk in the building in, like, non-commercial or retail areas. So, having just, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be ten feet depth, but, you know, even just five feet, or where the, the kind of the stoop transition is, having the, the provision of a, of a small, um, garden would be nice, or, um, you know, a porch, or like, the, the rhythm of porches and gardens, that sort of, that sort of, um, space for people to be outside, um, would be really nice, and I don't want to make it, I, I would like to have it as an option of some, some sort of way. I'm, I'm curious if there's any, any other way that the other commissioners could think of that, but, um, it does provide a good little buffer of greening and softness to the pedestrian experience. And then, another, the other similar topic to open space is the pedestrian connections or the paseos. So, I, I like paseos, but I worry that just having it as a percentage of a certain size of a building is, may lead to paseos to nowhere, or just dead space that's kind of dark or empty and unfriendly to walk through, or it becomes a massive gutting of, of buildable space. And so, I would really limit requirements for paseos to specific blocks that we designate in the future on the zoning map based on, like, a pre-designed circulation plan. Again, paseos to nowhere is not what we want. Um, they may be, there may be many situations where a paseo requirement is not appropriate for the context, and so tying it to just the size of the site alone could be, could run into some issues. Um, and then plazas. So, plazas, I also agree with the, the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter that plazas can easily become dead spaces if they're superfluous or unused. Um, they, and they can have the same negative contribution to the built environment that a small parking lot provides when they're not activated. Um, I would, you know, if there is a break in the space, having some sort of planted area that, um, provides, you know, trees or some other visual interest, that it's not necessarily, you know, always trying to be filled with people if it's not appropriate, would, would be maybe a good alternative to plazas, um, as, as some, some sort of option. So, like, more of a garden sort of setting, um, as an option. And then, that, okay, that was it for open space. And then, um, flexibility. So, one thing I, I agree with Commissioner Wiggins, and I do want to be able to come back to this in the near future and hopefully iteratively beyond that. However, I don't know what we, I don't know what the future holds, I don't know how much control we have on that, and it could end up getting sidelined or put on the back shelf for a while. Um, I think that it's important that this document in the near term provides us the ability to test out, um, test out design, um, and design, design standards that, that really make people appreciative. So, um, I would say in terms of flexibility, um, I would like to see the downtown area and the neighborhoods that are, that were built out, or the areas of the city that were built out before nineteen forty-five, to really have a starting point of the Mediterranean style expressed similarly to what the Santa Barbara, um, ODS has. Um, and then we build on to that, and then the rest of the city is provided more flexibility, um, for kind of like the baseline, um, ODS. I think that that would give us the ability for us to kind of test this document and see if it's creating the kind of environments that people want, and it would also make it easy for the, the city council to, to choose, hey, we want to expand or contract where the Mediterranean-style baseline ODS is available for the city, or remove it in the future if it's not working out. Um, but I do think that people want something that's traditional, and the Mediterranean style seems to be the most flexible in terms of building, massing, and, um, other things that you can, you can do with it to achieve, and it also fits with our city pretty well, with a lot of the most beloved cities, uh, cities' architecture. And so, it, it doesn't have to be just ripping off of, of Santa Barbara's Mediterranean, or the Spanish colonial Italianite style, but I think that we should incorporate that as, as a portion to, to really, as a portion of our city. Um, and I, I do want to hear what other commissioners say about that. Yeah.
Thank you.
May bar your, through the chair, may bar your thing again. Okay, I wanted to go back and reread four point one, point one, point C, so I can see exactly what it says. It is... One point, one point, one point, C, C dash A, actually, there we go. Um, yeah, utilize at least four different colors and materials on each building, exclusive of trim and roof. I think that is too many. Again, I used the much-beloved buildings test, looking at, um, the Ben Franklin Hotel, I think there's maybe two colors and materials on that building. So, um, four, requiring four seems like too many, so I would, I would drop that to three or even two. Um, again, Spanish, uh, Mission Revival, right, like, white, and then really dark brown or black, it's two colors, and especially if roof is excluded and we can't count the clay tile, then you've got two colors right there. Um, and the fifteen percent one gave me pause as well, because having Spanish Mission Revival in my mind, um, you've got your, your iron balconies and your window trims are black, your building is white, are, are you gonna have fifteen percent black trim? Is, are you gonna meet that threshold? I wasn't sure. Again, not an architect, I don't know what the right number is, but my, my gut reaction was fifteen might be too high. Um, I don't think I had anything for downtown for open space. Um, I also, looking in my notes, up to fifty percent of surfaces can be hardscape. I, that number felt like such a number. I, I wasn't sure, is that too much? Is that too little? Um, do we want that to be twenty-five? Like, shouldn't we want less hardscape? But I don't know what counts as hardscape, so if, like, pergolas count as hardscape and it's not literally concrete on the ground, then, um, maybe that's okay. So, I don't know, I'll just say that, that, that number gave me pause because it seems like a big number, but I realize a lot of things may count for that. And seven point two, point one, point B. That was, I jumped forward. I think that might be the El Camino plan. I had setbacks and I had build two lines, there was something about sidewalks, and I can't find it now. Um, all, that, I'll just leave it at, I guess I did not write my notes super well. Um, I felt like there was something in here that was a little bit contradictory with respect to sidewalks, and you might end up with choppy sidewalks, so maybe I'll try to go back later and, and look at that again and then send it in an email. The, and that takes us to flexibility. I, um, this one is tough. So, I think, again, I go back to simplify, I think we could, I think we could simplify some of these requirements, um, and through simplification, it then might become clearer what the combinations of these requirements would result in, but I agree with Commissioner Nugent that I would love to take the approach of starting to define specific architectural styles that are found in San Mateo, um, and, and then getting more detailed and, um, maybe more prescriptive there. Spanish Mission Revival seems like a good place to start because it is quite prevalent in our older sections of our city, but, um, there are others as well. You know, there's Craftsman, there's Victorian, so, looking at this as an iterative process, again, I, I don't know what, what we are allowed to suggest, you know, is this something where we could, uh, start with one, test it for a year, add a second, test it for a year, add a third, test it for a year, maybe that's one possible approach, but overall, I agree with your comment about, let's try to define one style and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this is the lightning round. So, let's see, uh, for colors, um, yeah, is the approach of requiring a combination of four, maximum of six, too constraining? Yes, definitely. Um, I had noted that before, I realized the specific questions there, and yeah, I said four colors is probably too many, um, you know, some discretion, some flexibility is needed there. Maybe it's two, maybe it's a building that will take on more colors, but it's also probably not just a matter of colors, it's a matter of, like, maybe it's two paint colors, but then there's some additional materials. Uh, so, anyway, I, I think, yes, four colors is too restrictive, that should be minimized. Um, and then I mentioned this before, four point seven, point one, this was brought up because I was reading this letter from this, um, Cal HGF, uh, group, and, um, I think to clarify that, it could change to, um, the word hue instead of palette. Palette, they're like, sort of opposite, apparently. So, hue is the same color, and the idea is to try to create slightly different versions of the same color, if that's what you're going for, but palette is different colors within a palette. So, anyway, I would suggest, considering that word. Um, and then this question of neon colors, uh, is prohibiting neon colors? Okay, I've gone back and forth about that all evening, and earlier today, I was like, oh no, of course we don't want neon colors. Oh, well, maybe we do. I'm thinking of brightly-colored buildings elsewhere, but we don't really want neon, we just want bright, I mean, bright colors should be acceptable in some ways, perhaps. I mean, I don't know. Um, so, in the end, uh, I, I guess it's okay to prohibit neon colors if we, if we knew that if there was a definition of neon, um, or if we could clarify and say that bright colors would be allowed if, uh, you know, if defined, specifically defined. So, I think that maybe there's a way to handle that and prohibit neon colors, but allow bright colors, if, if that was the, what the design intent was. Um, okay, and then for four point seven, under kind of, or where was it? The part about sustainable materials, I don't know where I, oh, here, I guess it's this part, four point seven, point D, point one, point D. Um, so, I had a few question, or a few thoughts about that. Um, there's one that said a fifty-year, which one was it? That it should have a fifty-year lifespan. Can't figure, can't see where that one was. Where did I read that? Um, well, let me see what I wrote. Four point seven, point one, point F. Oh, it said that it should be materials that have a fifty-year lifespan and a roof expect, the roof makes sense, but I don't know, there might be some materials that are not gonna have a fifty-year lifespan. I wasn't sure, I, I questioned that, I guess. I don't know if that's feasible for all materials. I mean, you know, that's sort of a broad statement, and that covers things like awnings or trellises or, you know, things that might not actually have that lifespan. Um, so, there maybe needs to be a little bit more, something else worked into that statement. Um, and then I made a note here from an earlier comment that, um... I made a note here from an earlier comment that we were talking about, I guess it was Northern California, question about Northern California. And so I made a comment that I think it's lead that says like, local materials have to be within a 400 mile radius, I think. So we could use that as an example or as a guideline and say that, you know, it has to be a local material and local materials are defined as within 400, manufactured within 400 miles of the project site. And then there's this question of vinyl. I just know that like, for instance, Kaiser Permanente, they don't allow any vinyl products, like in vinyl flooring. It has to be something else like rubber or whatever. They don't allow vinyl products because the manufacturing is apparently really terrible for the environment. I was just trying to Google it and find out what specifically is bad. But, so I certainly don't object to like having some, you know, environmental standards. I, it is, it is a constraint that puts, you know, added cost on a project. But ultimately, it's putting added costs onto the earth. So when we, you know, when we build with products that are bad for the environment. So I'm in support of fine tuning that. So vinyl, I think most of those other prohibited products, they're fine as well. Well, plywood, I guess that was exterior. Exterior, finish, I guess it's the finish exterior was, like plywood is prohibited. I'm not sure about that because there are like plywood finish, exterior finishes that are like kind of a plywood base that might be acceptable. So I don't know. And then the EIFS question that Commissioner Ebner brought up, I was trying to look and see if that was an environmental issue, but I guess not. It's just more of a durability issue that they don't really hold up. So I am in support, generally speaking, of the prohibited materials. Just not sure about a couple of them, like the plywood. Okay. So that's color. I think that was everything I wanted to say about that. The downtown, I actually don't really have too much to say other than just stuff we've talked about over the evening because, and I just wanted to say here that I, I want to refer to the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter. I think a lot about what they've talked about. And they researched and provided in their letter, kind of points to the, the design and, and feel and look of the downtown area. And so, and I think there's been a really interesting conversation here about how can we, how can we further that? Let's see, open space. I kind of, we've kind of touched on that a bit already, but I, what did I say here? I do think that the zoning code addresses it pretty well. So we're probably okay there. Regarding the 50% hardscape, oh yeah, I noted that the problem here is we might end up with a lot of fake grass. That I, I don't know if that, if we have only this much hardscaping and then, you know, people fill it in with like fake grass or something, which I'm not a fan of. But I think a larger amount of hardscape is acceptable if the remaining landscape is plants and dirt and stuff like that. So like actual landscaping. So I don't know if that is too much of a constraint. I feel like it could be a larger, and particularly because, yeah, like the open space requirements are being met on, you know, rooftops or terraces and stuff like that. So that probably creates some discrepancy. Okay. And lastly, flexibility. This is a little bit of a difficult one. On the one hand, I don't want to make requirements too onerous or strict. And I want to allow the developer and the applicant and the architect the flexibility to design a project that they want to, but we don't want to make them, this was my thinking was, I don't want to make them so loose or vague that, you know, anything can be approved if an applicant is looking to cut corners or value engineer out elements of a building. So I'm, I'm just looking to like protect, you know, kind of quality building, construction and design. But that's a hard question to answer. So I, I think there are some areas where it's too constraining. The ODS is too constraining. But that's what, you know, what we've been talking about, I guess. So I think that's everything I have. Let me just make sure. Yes, that's everything. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I add one comment about flexibility. So I was thinking about the example image that was shown to us during the presentation of the building that had a lot going on. And I'm really struggling with how to keep these guidelines simple and flexible, but how to prevent a lot from going on in situations where there might be a lot going on. So like my, you know, my, I've been thinking about this. My first thought was like, do we put maximums in some of these? Like a maximum of six color materials, a maximum of like four level changes. But again, I struggle to anticipate what the domino effects or implications of something like that may be. Like what if there is a good reason to have more than six colors? What if you want, you know, four slightly different shades of burnt sienna for some reason? I don't know. So I'm, that is something I'm struggling with is how do we deal with the situation of wanting to enforce a little bit more simplicity on designs?
Thank you.
Through the chair, can I just comment to what, so one thought that just popped into my head in terms of limiting the number of materials is if it's like a project of, say, townhomes or something like that, it, you may want to have, you know, if it's a pretty long block, you may want to have a significant number of more than four or six colors. That's just what popped to my head.
Through the chair, I wanted to respond to just a couple of things, great comments that I've heard made, but still leave you with the last word, if I may. One, Commissioner Patel brought up an excellent comment about the, the materials having sort of a minimum 15% of the facade. I had that written and it slipped through my mind. I, great, excellent point. I agree. Three materials might be fine. White, white color or colors, materials, white paint, brown trim and stucco. That's three. And that's a Mediterranean style building. But not all those are going to be 15%. And so those two together don't work. And I want to thank you for bringing that up. That one needs more thought. And listening to these considerations of too many, too, too few, too many, I was initially looking at the six material slash color maximum saying, okay, we can, we can live with that. But I've been persuaded by your excellent detailed thinking about how you walk along a building and how often you see, see changes and thinking that, that, that actually might really be a constraint. So not leaving staff with any clear opinion on my, on my perspective, but just grappling with it in the same way you are. And one other thing I wanted to comment on, just the idea that we start with the pre-war areas and start with Mediterranean. I was thinking of, I think we have to get to that point. I was probably thinking of it from a sort of an opposite perspective of like, well, we have to get to where that level of what you're talking about and find buildings that we all, all, you know, or the majority of people sort of say we would like. If, if we can end up with a document that doesn't address the whole city at first, it's not really my call, like, then, yeah, that's my only concern with that is, is like what, we, that would just mean we maybe don't have an ODS in, in other parts of the city for a little while.
Through the chair. So my, my point was that we take the base ODS that we've created and we've, we're tweaking. And then as, similar to how we have like sub areas, special planned areas, we do certain portions of the city where we have that. And the reason why I say we do that now is because we don't know what the funding is going to be. Like we can hope that next year we can come back to it, but we don't know what's going to happen. And so I'm like, do it now. We'll get something in. It gives us the feedback faster. We have a AB test. And then it allows easy flexibility from, from the perspective of the, of the council to say yes, no, in the future, rather than, well, we would like you to do that, but we need to add staff time or we need to get more grant funding. And so that's where I'm at. And I think from my perspective is, it just seems very clear from, from what I hear from people that having that as kind of the baseline. Again, you can come to, to the other planning process, our typical planning process, if you want something different, but having as a baseline, something that a majority of people seem to like as a, as a style in this document that we sign off on in December, seems to me to be prudent. So that's just where I'm coming from.
Thank you for that clarification. Fully on board. And I had no further comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Massing and, oh no, we're past massing. Can we start over again? Colors and materials. I'm struggling a little bit with the maximum of six different colors, although two minutes ago I wasn't struggling with that. I thought it was a unique photo that you showed of, I think, an apartment building in Bay Meadows. The, one of the colors was accentuated underneath the decks, which I thought was a pretty good idea. Hadn't seen that before. So I, I really don't know how to give you directions on, on the, on the colors. I do not think it's a good idea to prohibit neon colors, especially if they're combined with black lights. It's just fantastic. But, but no, I don't see why we would zone in on a certain type of color. That doesn't seem to make much sense to me. I do have some concerns with the materials list. I think we cannot arbitrarily exclude plywood. There are some great exterior grade plywoods that are available that are architecturally pleasing. And as the process continues to mature, there will be even more plywood products that will be feasible and of high quality. I also don't think that aluminum should be arbitrarily excluded. I have installed architecturally pleasing aluminum panels almost as artwork on the exterior of buildings on some of the entryways, and it's held up very well and it's, it's very attractive. I think you also may be excluding some door frames. I know most exterior door frames are steel, but there are opportunities for an, for an aluminum door frame on an exterior opening. The window frames category, it says window frames. I think it should say window frames, window and door frames. I think you should probably capture both of those in that, that heading. So that was it on the colors and the materials. I very much enjoyed reading the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter. It was clear, concise and simple. And it actually taught me some lessons that I wasn't aware of, although some of them seemed to be rather intuitive. Lining up windows makes all the sense in the world. I thought that was pretty much common architectural features. But I really like their, their, the style of the, the time stated or whatever they want to say, architecture. I've been in Burlingame recently and I've seen some great examples of some beautiful concrete buildings and they're architecturally pleasing. And it, you know, I think, I think we have to have a lot of different styles to try and incorporate into this mix of building designs. I like the idea of the Spanish revival, yet I think it has to be specific, as you have said, Adam. I don't want to tie our hands down to one specific style because that's kind of where we're going now and what we're trying to get, get away from. But neighborhoods need to be respected and enhanced and putting in buildings that don't embellish the, that the areas is, I think, a mistake. Open space. So I think rooftops are a great place for open space, especially if they're open to the public. But most, more often not, they are not open to the public. I don't think you can, you, I think you can have solar panels on a roof that may be suspended above the parapet wall and have open space below the, the, the solar panels. I don't think you, you get one or the other. I also think of open space, I'm, I'm a little concerned about shadows and sun. So to Seema's point, I always sit in the benches that are in the shade. Yet, when I go to a plaza, I want sun more often than not be cut. And, and I am, I am not attracted to a plaza where I'm going to be cold. It doesn't bring me any joy whatsoever. So it, it's hard to, it's hard to fit open spaces specifically where you're going to meet everyone's comfort level and what they want. But I think an open space, it gives you a feeling of being, well, being outside. So I think there's other ways to incorporate that into buildings. If, if you have living walls that can bring, your mind thinks it's outside, knows it's outside, get some joy from that. And you don't actually have to have a, a place to sit there. It's just a momentary pleasure. And I, I think it can add a lot to our feeling of, of comfort in our, in, in the downtown area. It brings a lot for me to the table. Flexibility, I think is the key. You know, the whole goal of this is to streamline housing. But we have to be flexible enough where developers feel that they have the abilities to build what they're good at building and what materials they use and how they efficiently do it. I was a builder. I knew what I wanted to build and I knew what worked well for me. And that might not work for another developer. So you have to remember they all have certain skill sets that they can bring to the table. And we have to make it so we not, I mean, we're, we're trying to do two things here. We're trying to, we're trying to build housing as efficiently as we can. And we're trying to entice builders to do that. So the process has to be, here is what we think is best for our city. How can you incorporate that into your skill sets? Not everybody's going to be able to build the same type of buildings. You're going to have different perspectives from different developers. And I think you need to give them the opportunity to excel at what they're able to do. The HDF letter also had some good points in it. And I would not want to become involved in litigation if we haven't been extremely cautious in putting a document together that will stand up to a battle in court. We all know that isn't where we need to be spending our time. I would think that because of the amount of time that it, that it takes to put guidelines like this together, that I'm concerned that whatever, whatever may get implemented is going to be somewhat difficult to update if we don't give ourselves a timeline to update it. Which leads me to think that, and this of course would be up to council, if you would do an ODS and have a sunset date. Only because it's taken us five years to get to here now. And if it, if it doesn't stay as a focal point, which is mandated by a deadline, I'm not so sure that we, we would have the resources or quite frankly, the will to continue to working on it. And I'm not saying that the, that staff would not have the intention, but they might not have the resources. And I think the best way to do it is to give yourself a self-imposed deadline to have tested what we want to try and see where it goes and come back with a new document or an enhanced document that might be more appropriate. And I think that's about all I have to say. Do we have any closing comments?
Through the chair, if I could clarify, a couple of questions. Thank you so much for the detailed Thank you so much for the detailed discussion. There were a couple of points that I'm unsure about the guidance from the Commission. One is related to vinyl. I heard different things. Some commissioners say that vinyl is okay, some say that vinyl in windows is okay, and some say that vinyl is not okay. Can we get a straw poll, perhaps, of each commissioner on where they stand, so we know whether we should include or exclude that material?
Through the Chair, I confess to being not fully educated on the environmental impacts of vinyl, and I'm not going to get educated in this moment, I'm afraid. So I, I can be swayed. I've heard good arguments to, to prohibit it. I, I don't think I have a strong feeling. So that's, sorry, that's not helpful, first straw poll, but.
That's helpful. If no strong feeling, let's see what the rest of the Commission. Thanks.
I think we, I'm fine with prohibiting it. I mean, if they, if a developer really wants to use vinyl windows, they have the other avenue to go to. And in this case, we're trying to make a clear statement, I guess. They can go with aluminum windows, or, you know, other, other products. I think it's, I think it's an opportunity for us as a city to start to set more guidelines, or more requirements, I guess, regarding sustainability and environmental issues.
I have been swayed by Commissioner Williams' great comments, so I agree with her.
Thank you.
The only reason I say, hey, consider vinyl is, is, I believe there's a cost difference, but.
Because they're cheap.
Yeah, they're cheap. And, and they're generally pretty low maintenance. And so that's, that's where I'm, is, I just come from it, from a cost. Like, I don't want to, I don't know what the, how big of a delta that is between the two. But I can be persuaded. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to die on that.
Well, and I feel a little bit now that, now I'm like, oh, shoot, I've swayed people, and I, I'm not particularly an expert, so maybe I should do slightly more research than just, you know, my experience that I.
To the Chair, if, if I could suggest something, I think I heard earlier that maybe vinyl windows is something that the Commission would be okay with, so maybe the middle ground could be allowing vinyl windows, but not vinyl as a material?
So I, I'm not even sure what type of vinyl material is available for the facing of buildings. I've never really anticipated that. When I think of vinyl as a building product, it is for doors and window frames.
Or flooring, which we're not considering, you know, which is not part of.
Correct, right, yeah, it's not part of it. I had never thought of vinyl as being an environmental issue, and thank you for bringing that up. I have had experience with wood doors and window frames that, to me, are, they are more expensive, and sometimes they don't work as well as the vinyl, which is kind of surprising to me. So, and quite frankly, the, the windows, they're, they are considerably pricier, the wood, right? And you have to paint them and maintain them and all the rest of the stuff. I think in this case, for doors and frames, I would go with vinyl, I'd be fine with vinyl. I'm not so sure if the environmental thing kind of weighs itself out against one another. You know, the harvesting of wood isn't all that.
Yeah, that's true.
All that environmentally sound either. So my vote is, I'm okay with vinyl.
Okay, thank you. And then I heard at least two commissioners say that they were, they did not want to prohibit neon, or were okay with neon colors, but I didn't hear from the rest of the commissioners, especially Commissioner Wiggins, Commissioner Nugent, and Commissioner Patel.
Through the Chair, I, I was okay with no, no neon. Presuming we define it, you know, it's not just that it glows, it needs to, well, it's a color, yeah, it's not a neon light. So you have to objectively define it, I was fine with that.
Through the Chair, I, I do want to make sure that we don't run risk of any sort of legal issues, so as, I, we need to define it in a, in a defensible way. But I'm okay with prohibiting neon colors, but I would like, at our next review, to have a good sense of what those neon colors are, and I might change my mind if it seems overly expansive, or it doesn't include, you know, like, a nice Louis Barragon-type color, you know?
Yeah, I, I agree. I am fine with prohibiting neon if it's defined.
I agree. If we can define neon, I would be okay with prohibiting it, but would also like to preserve the ability for bright Mediterranean colors, so however we can objectively define neon, but not exclude jewel tones, I'd be okay with that.
Oh, there you go, jewel tones.
Well, I disagree with all of them, so that's fine.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Also, can I do a follow-up email to everyone, or at least to staff, about vinyl? Because I'm sort of like, oh, I hope I'm not saying the wrong thing. I want to go back and do a little research.
Yes, that would be considered part of the record for the ODS, so we can include that as a comment.
Great. So we'll close that.
All right.
No, go ahead.
Through the Chair, I just wanted to make sure I heard, are people supportive of the Mediterranean, you know, study, basically, almost like a study area with, I'm thinking mostly north, north of 92, having that as a separate thing? Is it, okay, great. Sorry.
Any announcements?
Yes, a few announcements. So I did want to start by, I know Zach's here as well, I don't want to steal his thunder, but we are starting on efforts, outreach efforts for the general plan update. You have received newsletters in your mailboxes. We've done a lot of outreach. We've posted the draft general plan online, the Strive San Mateo website. We have also an environmental impact report that'll be coming out by the end of this week. So a very exciting time. Our kickoff for the outreach effort will be through a virtual workshop on August 16th, followed by five town hall meetings in each district, as well as public hearings before the Planning Commission on the EIR and the draft general plan, and also the General Plan Subcommittee. So those are all on the Strive San Mateo website. Our next meeting for the Planning Commission will be August 22nd. We are going to do a special joint meeting with the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, and this will be focused on the One Shoreline Plan, so it'll be an informational workshop on that item. And then on September, and I do want to confirm that everybody's present for that one in person. Okay, great, thank you. And then September 12th is when we would have the public comment meeting for the general plan EIR. My understanding is that Chair Ebner will be absent that, for that meeting, and Commissioner Williams will be joining remotely, so I do want to make sure that we have the majority of the Commission present in, in the city for that, that meeting, so we can have that meeting. Okay? Those are all the announcements from me, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything from commissioners? Then we'll close the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.